Good evening and welcome to the August 13th meeting of the Newport News City Council. We are so happy that so many of you have turned out to welcome our new city manager for his first meeting. Very, very kind of you. If you're here to speak tonight, we ask that you sign a card that's located in the foyer, or I believe they have also a sign up sheet tonight on a particular item. If the item to which you wish to speak is not on the agenda, we ask that you mark Item I, and that would be matters germane to the City Council. We have a light system on the podium. When your time starts after you give your name and your address, the green light comes on. You have five minutes. The yellow light indicates that you have one minute left, and the red light indicates that your time is up and we ask that you take your seat. It is not however mandatory that you take the entire five minutes. The City Code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to the business of the Council. Matters that are germane to the business of the Council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization. Copies of the City ordinance regarding citizen participation are printed on light blue paper and can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address Council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask that this time that you check and silence your phones. And with that, we will begin as usual with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. We would like to invite Reverend Cynthia Newby from Gethsemane Baptist Church to deliver an invocation to the City Council. Afterwards, we would like to ask Vice Mayor Bateman to lead us in the pledge, and for both, would you please stand?
Father God, our Creator, we thank you for this another day and for another opportunity for the members of this City Council to convene together. We thank you for the leadership of this Council and their desire to serve the residents of this great city. We thank you for giving them humble hearts and clear minds with which to make the best and right decisions so that the City of Newport News will continue to grow and thrive. We invite you into this meeting tonight and welcome your guidance and direction. We ask for your insight as the business of this city is conducted and pray that the decisions will be made with wisdom and with the best interest of the community at heart. We pray now for your peace and that it will prevail in this room and that all business of this city will be addressed decently and in order. We thank you in advance for a productive and successful meeting. It is in your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We first have a resolution of recognition in honor of the 40th anniversary of the discovery of the USS Monitor. So Mr. Stuart Katz, former city attorney, Mr. David Alberg, Superintendent of the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary, Ms. Shannon Rickles, Education Coordinator for the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary, Mr. Elliott Gruber, President of the Mariners Museum, Ms. Annegy Holloway, Vice President, Museum Collections, Programs, and Curator of the USS Monitor Center, and Mr. David Crop, Director of the USS Monitor Center, will accept the resolution.
Good evening.
Good evening, Reverend.
Whereas on March 9th, 1862, the USS Monitor, the prototype for a new class of armored warship, fought the CSS Virginia, formerly the USS Merrimack, at Hampton Roads in that famous battle that ended the Virginia's blockade at the James River. And whereas the now-famous Monitor with its iconic rotating gun turret, innovative steam engine, and iron-plated exterior while under the tow off the coast of Cape Hatteras, North Carolina, sank in a storm on December 31st, 1862. And whereas the Monitor laid at rest under 230 feet of water 16 miles offshore until its inverted hull was discovered on August 27th, 1973 by a team of scientists led by John G. Newton of Duke University Marine Laboratory. And whereas on January 30th, 1975, the Congress of the United States designated the Monitor wreck site as our nation's first marine sanctuary. And today, the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary protects the wreck site and from its offices in Newport News, Virginia, is dedicated to the management of this historic resource and conservation of the vessel's artifacts. One major project has been the raising of the major hull components, including the gun turret, resulting in the discovery of the remains of two members of the Monitor crew who were later interned at Arlington National Cemetery with full military honors. And whereas on March 9th, 2007, the Mariners Museum in Newport News opened the 63,500-square-foot USS Monitor Center, offering visitors the unparalleled opportunity to learn about the revolutionary iron clad through state-of-the-art exhibits and the work of the Batten Conservation Laboratory Complex, where the Monitor's 120-ton wrought iron turret sits in a tank filled with 90,000 gallons of a treatment solution intended to reverse the damage caused by more than a century and a half of immersion in sea water. And whereas in recognition of the 40th anniversary of the discovery of the Monitor wreck site, the Council of the City of Newport News, Virginia wishes to adopt this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Newport News, Virginia, that it hereby recognizes August 27th, 2013, as the 40th anniversary of the discovery of the wreck of the USS Monitor, that it expresses its appreciation to the efforts of all who participated in the discovery and exploration of the wreck site and its gratitude for the efforts of the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary and the USS Monitor Center at the Mariners Museum in the protection, interpretation, and conservation of the Monitor and its artifacts. And three, that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the records of this body and that a copy be presented to the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary and the USS Monitor Center at the Mariners Museum. That this resolution shall be in effect on and after the date of its adoption, June 25th, 2013. This is it? Yes. Who would like to?
We'll do it together.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, on behalf of NOAA and the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary, we just want to thank the Council for this recognition on our 40th anniversary. It's a huge day for us, and we're very excited that they finally had discovered the Monitor in 1973, and just appreciate this recognition. And just, we also want to thank everybody for understanding and recognizing the role that the Monitor played, not only in our nation's history, but also in Virginia's history, and the role that she continues to play with the artifacts at the Mariners Museum. Thank you.
And I would just like to add, on behalf of the Mariners Museum and the Board of Trustees and Staff, as well as our partners at NOAA's Monitor National Marine Sanctuary, to thank the City Council for this wonderful proclamation, and also to thank the Monitor National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council Member Stuart Katz, who was instrumental in making this happen. It is particularly fitting that the City of Newport News honor this milestone anniversary as the Monitor's story is one that is deeply rooted in this community. We are indebted to the men and women who discovered the signature vessel 40 years ago, and in their honor, we will strive to make truth on the promise of the words written by the surgeon of the Monitor just days after the tragedy. And he said, "So long as we remain a people, so long will the work of the Monitor be remembered and her story told to our children's children." Again, thank you very much.
I did so, Frank. Unless there is.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy Willahot, Height, and I'm sure I've messed that up, and Mr. Harvey Mears, Newport News Drug Court Program Participants will accept the proclamation. Are they present? Stacy Will Horton, St. Will, okay, good. Okay, good evening. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment, to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas in 2011, 2.3 million people aged 12 and over, and older, received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and 31.6 million adults aged 18 and older received mental health services according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help. And whereas on October 1, 2011, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, more than 11 million uninsured individuals with behavioral health needs will become eligible for affordable insurance, insurance coverage for their treatment needs according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. We must ensure that all of these individuals are successfully enrolled into coverage. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office on National Drug Control Policy, and Newport News Drug Treatment Court invite all residents of Newport News to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, McKinley L. Price, Mayor of the City of Newport News, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2011 as National Recovery Month in the City of Newport News, and call upon the people of Newport News to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing September 2013 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Mr. Charlie Hill, Dr. Rich Rento, Urologist with Riverside Hampton Roads Urology and co-founder of the Hampton Roads Prostate Health Forum, Ms. Golden Hill Bethune, Bethune Hill, rather, Board Chair and Founder of the Community Free Clinic of Newport News, and co-founder of the Hampton Roads Prostate Health Forum, and Mr. Keith Gregory, Executive Director of the Hampton University Proton Therapy Institute and Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, will accept the proclamation. Whereas September 2013 has been declared National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed non-scan cancer in men across the nation, I'd just like to repeat that, and where prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed non-scan cancer in men across the nation, and is the second leading cause of cancer deaths among men. Whereas Virginia has strong, has among the highest prostate cancer mortality rates in the nation, as indicated by 21.1 per 100,000 cases for the period of 2006-2010, 24.1 per 100,000. Whereas the Peninsula Health District, which includes the cities of Newport News, Williamsburg, Pecosin, and James City Counties and York Counties, reported death rates of 22.8 and 45.4 per 100,000 of white men and black men respectively between 2003 and 2007. Whereas we recognize that the men of African descent and men whose fathers or brothers have been diagnosed are at a higher risk of developing prostate cancer and require more aggressive early detection guidelines compared with men on average risk. And whereas it is known that almost one-third of prostate cancer occurs in men under the age of 65 during their prime work years, and at any age, prostate cancer devastates families through loss of income, partnership, and support. Whereas prostate cancer leaves too many parents, women, children, and other family members without the men they love, and African-American families are disproportionately affected due to African-American men having higher rates of prostate cancer diagnosis and deaths than men of other racial and ethnic groups in the United States. And whereas research suggests that men could reduce their risk of prostate cancer mortality by following recommended prostate cancer early detection screening guidelines, including prostate specific antigen blood tests and digital rectal examinations, as well as increased awareness activities. Now whereas the Hampton Roads Prostate Health Forum would like to recognize the dedication and support of their collaborative partner organizations to include the Virginia Oncology Associates, Urology of Virginia, Riverside Centerra, and Bon Secures Health Systems, Eastern Virginia Medical School, Hampton University Proton Therapy Institute, and the 100 Black Men of America, the Community Free Clinic of Newport News, Calver Memorial Presbyterian Church, Queen Street Baptist Church, Newport News Chapters of the Link Incorporated, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, Delta Sigma Phi Phi Sorority, and many others. Now therefore, I, McKinley L. Price, Mayor of the City of Newport News, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Newport News, and urge all men in our community and throughout the country to become aware of their risk of prostate cancer, talk to the healthcare providers about prostate cancer, and whenever appropriate, get screened for the disease.
I would like Kristoff to please stand since you did not come up here. One of our founding directors, Kristoff Lehman, is also our research guru. He's been with us from the very beginning. For those of you who have not heard about us, we do not want you to leave this evening without knowing about the Hampton Roads Prostate Health Forum. Our sole purpose is to reduce the number of men who die from prostate cancer in Hampton Roads and improve the quality of life of men diagnosed, the women in their lives, and their family members. This is absolutely critical that we all understand that. You should also know and be proud that the Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you, and Council of Newport News, we served the entire Hampton Roads area. However, the City of Newport News has been the most consistent municipality in all of Hampton Roads from the very beginning. So if you live in Newport News, if you have some connection with Newport News, you should be proud of that because the problem is not just in Newport News, it's all over Hampton Roads, and we want you to know what the City of Newport News is doing. We also want to raise the attention of September 7th. We will have the Fourth Annual Prostate Cancer Walk and Run. This year, it will be held at the Hampton University Proton Therapy Institute campus, but the first three walks were held in Newport News and led by the Mayor. You should be aware of that, and we are proud of that. And finally, on September 28th, we're going to do something that has not been done anywhere in this country. We are sponsoring training for primary care physicians, internists, and all of the doctors who are on the front line to greet men and treat men with prostate cancer because they really do not know enough about prostate cancer, particularly for men at highest risk of having prostate cancer. Let me repeat this. There's been so much confusion about, do you do PSA tests, do you not do PSA tests, do you do digital rectal exams, do you not do digital rectal exams? Last May, the American Urological Association issued some guidelines and simply were updates from their best practices, and they essentially said, "For men of average risk, we're updating our guidelines." And if you read very carefully the guidelines, they said, "This does not apply to men of highest risk, men with family history, and men of African descent." You can figure that out yourselves. There are no uniform or universal guidelines for black men in America for prostate cancer. This is why we do what we do. All of us should be fully aware of that, and if you have prostate cancer in your family, even if you're not black, you should be aware that there are no uniform guidelines to address this condition. I thank you so very much.
Lastly, 2013-2014 Mayor's Youth Citizen of the Year Award. Would Ms. Tracy Snell, Youth Services Supervisor, Department of Human Services, please join me? Is she here? Yes, great, thank you. I am absolutely pleased tonight to present an award which I am very proud of, and that's the Mayor's Youth Citizen of the Year Award. Nominations for this award were open to all public and private school students in the City of Newport News. To qualify for nominations, students had to show excellence in community service, leadership, and citizenship. Excellence in one area was not enough. It was the combination of the three areas that displayed the commitment and dedication of each nominee. Nominations were submitted by citizens, teachers, and mentors, and I applaud their efforts for promoting and encouraging the positive aspects of our youth. The winner of the Mayor's Youth Citizen of the Year Award will receive a $100 gift card, an engraved award, and an opportunity to serve as a youth ambassador and the youth spokesperson for Newport News events whenever their schedule allows. The runner-up will receive a $50 gift cards and a certificate. We have with us tonight two young people who are outstanding examples of youth dedicated to community service, leadership, and citizenship. They are excellent candidates, and I understand it was a very difficult decision. When your name is called, please come forward and remain at the front of the Council chambers. The runner-up for the Mayor's Youth Citizen of the Year Award is Ms. Peyton Loving. Would you please come forward? Peyton is a rising junior at Warwick High School. Peyton will attend functions if the winner is unable to attend. Peyton is a member of the student leaders assisting incoming freshmen with transition to high school. She was captain of the JV Girls Field Hockey Team at Warwick High School. She serves every year with the Virginia Dental Society's Mission on Mercy Project, which I'm very familiar with, providing dental services to children and adults in need, including organizing a donation drive to provide stuffed animals for their children. She assists her neighbors in times of crisis and need and supports various community events, and represented Newport News as a page for the Virginia General Assembly House of Delegates in 2011. Peyton was a strong, has a strong connection to Warwick High School and the City of Newport News, and a desire to encourage her peers to become involved in school and community activities. According to her nominator, Peyton is also known for her kindness and compassion to all she meets in both her school and community. She is always willing to go the extra mile. Congratulations personally, Peyton. I just personally want to thank her and recognize her efforts. Okay, now, the winner of the 2013-2014 Mayor's Youth Citizen of the Year Award is Ms. Zaxia Roberts. Zaxia, Zaxia, I'm sorry, Zaxia? 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 Zaxia Roberts. Would you please come forward? Zaxia is a rising junior at Warwick High School. As a member of the youth development team and committee chair for the Service Projects Committee, she recruited over 50 students to participate in the Newport News Youth Volunteer Corps canned structure food drive, and collected 1,638 canned goods and non-perishable food items to restock the shelves of the local food banks. She also participated in the Newport News Project Inclusion Camp in 2012 and actively recruited club members over the summer, bringing six new members to the first meeting of the school year, and was instrumental in increasing the number of group members by the end of the school year. She led the Project Inclusion Club members in writing an action plan to address the number of students placed on and in out of school suspension through the STOP Campaign, a pledge drive to change students' negative attitudes and actions into positive and production ones. I might add that I think that Project Inclusion is one of the best programs we do in the city. She wrote a proposal to school administrators and was successful in hosting two assemblies sharing the Project Inclusion objective and mission with students. She was selected as Project Inclusion Youth Intern for the 2013 school year. She participated in the establishment of the Youth Achieving Change Together at Warwick High School, in which she received training to co-facilitate a healthy relationship curriculum for ninth-grade students with high school teachers. She identified a need for additional time for students to learn about healthy relationships and helped make arrangements to facilitate the curriculum with eighth-grade students at the Seaward-Low Scott Center. She received a certificate as a reading mentor for students kindergarten through third grade and assisted the Youth Act Group in partnering with Haydenwood Elementary School to conduct weekly reading sessions, which was so successful that the school agreed to continue the program the next year. She is a member of the Warwick High School NJROTC and is a student leader assisting incoming freshmen with transitioning into high school. Zaxia is a positive role model and a leader among her peers, consistently demonstrating exceptional qualities of leadership, community service, and citizenship. Her nominator stated, "She holds a level of leadership that is not often seen with teens." Congratulations, Zaxia. Now, I just personally want to thank them and recognize their effort. You know, I'm so proud of both of you. You set examples for the city, you make us proud, and you make us comfortable in the fact that I think in the future, we'll be fine. Thank you very much again. (applause) Thank you very much again.[596.25][596.25](APPLAUSE). Okay, we're now at the agenda point where, on page six, if you're following electronically. Item E1 is a request to adopt a resolution approving Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PLN-1310, to change the framework for the future 2013 Comprehensive Plan land use designation from research and development to mixed use on property located at 12080 Jefferson Avenue to allow for a mixed-use development. The area under consideration is generally located in the southeast corner of the Oyster Point Road's intersection with Jefferson Avenue. It contains approximately 44.06 acres and is identified as research and development on the land use map. The Plan Amendment recommends a mixed-use designation in order to provide an opportunity for other complementary supporting uses to be introduced within the Jefferson Technology and Research Center. On July 17th, 2013, the Planning Commission voted six to one with one abstention to recommend approval of the Plan Amendment to City Council. The city manager would now like to make his recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We feel that this land use change, this mixed-use development, will really help facilitate development on this site. We've seen the benefit of mixed use in many other areas of the city to help bring a vital portion to the city and help build a vibrant area. We think it will actually enhance property values, but really, very importantly, we think it's going to help facilitate the development of that research and development park by having mixed use that will attract a vibrant activity to that area. So we would highly recommend approval, Mayor. And I would want to remind everyone, this is on the land use change, and so everyone will get a chance to speak on this item, as well as the project proposal, and the comments really should be on the land use change for this item as well, for those people that want to comment.
Here's an interesting question. Are there any cards?[764.01][764.01](LAUGHING).
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note that the vice mayor, on my advice, is abstaining from these two items, and he is not participating in the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first on the list, we have Trip Ferguson. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, members of council, Mayor Price. My name is Trip Ferguson, I was born in Newport News. I reside at 23 Indigo Dam Road. Having had the opportunity of serving on the Board of Trustees at Christopher Newport University, I gained insight on not only the cost of higher education, but how financially and culturally dynamic a university can be to a city. I also had the pleasure of sitting on the framework for the future 2015 committee, where several dozen citizens spent countless evenings and hours poring over documents provided to aspire planning department. We successfully laid out ideas that would create value that had been locked up for decades by neglect and old prejudices, creating value and opportunities for the next generation of residents. Our eyes were always on that James River Bridge, where so many of our young engineers are now crossing after work to their residences outside of Newport News. As citizens, we unanimously recommended this site to be designated as mixed use, unanimously. The proposed development that Mr. Lawson has now before us will generate $3.5 million per year for the city of Newport News in tax revenue in the mixed-use area alone. That, my friends, is the equivalent to educating 290 students each and every year, and does not include the additional revenue that would be generated by the Corporate Research Center. If we do not grow our commercial base, we will continue raising taxes on the remaining assets, which then devalues those assets, requiring even higher taxes. This concept is known in our business circles as the death spiral, seen more recently in one-company cities, where the parent company goes bankrupt, or sequestration creates a severe cutback in employment. This tech center concept not only puts money in our coffers, but diversifies our economic base, thereby offsetting potential impacts to us of sequestration in the defense sector. We certainly have enough wisdom in this room tonight to do the math on this one. Let's unanimously vote yes. Thank you.
Lee Dempsey. Or Leah, I believe. Yes, thank you.
Fine, thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Leah Dempsey, I reside in Isle of Wight County. My address is 12155 Thinwood Court in Smithfield. I was on the Planning Commission in Isle of Wight County when the property for this project first came into the news, and I've been following the actions of the Newport News Planning Commission and this council on that property ever since. At the time in Isle of Wight County, we had a similar property proposed for rezoning and development. That property became known as the Ben's Grant Project. The property was designated in our comprehensive plan as designated as a Development Service District, but it needed to come before the Planning Commission and our Board of Supervisors for rezoning for multi-use. The development for Ben's Grant included an intersection improvement for a failing intersection, a variety of stores to include a Walmart, single and multifamily housing units, a medical center, office spaces, and much-needed recreation facilities to include open spaces and pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It took the owners and developers of that project seven years to move it from the introduction, the proposal to move from the introduction to county staff through final approval by our Board of Supervisors. We, as the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, went over every detail of that project to include design of the intersection and down to the details of what the materials would be in the housing units. We asked the developer to address every new issues that citizens brought before us, instead of noting that we would leave it for final approval of our professional planning and engineering staff to address. The development of Ben's Grant was finally approved by our Board of Supervisors in May of 2009. However, during that seven-year process, developers and facilities and major anchor stores and services either moved to other project and areas or lost interest in that particular project. We lost a tremendous opportunity in Isle of Wight County when that project was not completed. Not only did we lose the loss of local shopping opportunities for our citizens and the associated revenue, we lost a medical facility, educational, small business opportunities, and recreation facilities. Lastly, we lost the timing for creating economic diversity in our tax base. The project would have brought in an estimated annual revenue for the county of over $2 million, and that was a conservative estimate by our planning department. We have already had to increase taxes in Isle of Wight County just to support what we have currently, and without a significant tax increase, we can't invest in economic development, our Parks and Recreation Department, our schools, or even our fire and rescue program. Comprehensive plan and land use designations are designed to grow and develop with the needs of the community. I can only advise you to not make the mistake we did, vote yes for this change in zoning in order to improve the present and future quality of life for Newport News and its citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Tom Grunell reside at 18 Colony Road, Newport News. Mayor, councilman. My question about this whole facility is that the thesis is that if we build it, they will come. Well, we had that same premise with the World Air Show, that if we spend the taxpayer dollars, the air show will take place. It didn't. So I question as to whether this is going to be another one of those boondoggle investments. I look at all the property down on Rock Landing that's for rent, that's empty, that could be used for research and other activities, and I think my recollection is correct, there's one company that has started out on Middle Ground, which is high-tech, and that's on nanotube technology. So if that company is willing to invest in that area without putting up additional buildings, well, I think that we could put our additional buildings to better use. Most research dollars come from the government, and the government, with its sequestration and with its tight budgets, it's very difficult to squeeze dollars out of any of the agencies to get new projects going. We see that with NASA. NASA's slowly declining budgets, and that's what's happening across the country. The other problem that I see is on the interstate, the entrance to Interstate 64 is already a problem. Now, we're going to turn around and create an additional problem there. Now, if you have a solution to that problem, why not implement that now? Because it's already an existing problem. I wonder what the merchants in the area feel about this and how they feel with the new competition for housing and shopping. And I think that those are the key questions that I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.[1338.76][1338.76](APPLAUSE). Joanne Menaric. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Joanne Menaric, and I live at 114 Lindbrook Drive. I'm opposed to changing the current comprehensive plan. I think we have enough mixed use in Newport News, and I worry about what is happening to our green space. That is a beautiful area. It's very congested now, the traffic is horrendous lots of the day, and at rush hour, it becomes just troublesome. The other concerns I have about having another mixed use is what about all the apartments and condos that have been built recently in the area, Port Warwick, City Center, and the ones on Boykin? Are those full? They were just, some of them just recently finished, and I doubt, I know that they are not full at this point in time, and do we need more housing? Also, the number of restaurants that are in that particular area are unbelievable. You can go anywhere from fast food all the way up to nice sit-down restaurants, so I don't see the need for more. My concern is there's already plenty of competition, and competition is good, but at some point in time, aren't we oversaturated with places to shop and mixed-use development? I think the idea of keeping it a research and development center is the best, and I support that idea. Thank you.
Thank you.[1440.33][1440.33](APPLAUSE). Jeff Stargill. Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, welcome to your chair. I'm a resident of Newport News, live at 231 Palin Avenue. I'm an architect and a planner, my business is located in Hilton. I grew up in this city. I want to make two disclosures. First is that our company does business with the owner of the property, the subject property, and I just have to tell you, as somebody who's worked with them, that they're straightforward people, they tell you what they mean, and they stand behind it. And I think we're lucky to have their interest in such a critical piece of property, and we're lucky to have their presence in our city. The second disclosure is I grew up in the household of a city planner. My father was the city planning director in Newport News from 1961 to 1974. And so I have a lot of stories over the dinner table about Newport News, and his career spanned the period of time after Newport News consolidated with Warwick County. There was, as everyone knows, vast expansion into the former Warwick County, Warwick City. One of the projects he was involved in was transitioning the old Beaumont Missile Base to what is today City Center in Oyster Point. Fifty years ago, the concept was a research and development park. That was in the middle of the space race and the Apollo missions, and that dominated the agenda. The other thing that he talks about is it was always clear that Oyster Point would be the center of the city in the future. Here we are 50 years later, it is the center of the city. It has to be more than a research park. It has to embody all the things that make a full community what it needs to be. It needs to be livable, people need to be able to live there, it needs to create jobs, and it needs to work in the context of a big, broad city that we are today. So I appreciate you letting me come tonight and share that. Hopefully, it'll be useful. Thank you.
Thank you.[1598.33][1598.33](APPLAUSE). Matthew Roth. Matthew Roth.
Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Matthew Roth, I reside at 700 Prescott Circle, I'm in the Village Green subdivision. I'm conditionally in favor of the change in zoning for this project. I think it could be a very valuable asset to the city. Our subdivision, Village Green, is in very close proximity to the project, we're the closest neighborhood to this proposed development. My biggest issue originally was potential stormwater. Talked to Representative Coleman specifically about our stormwater problems, and we flood. We flood bad. When the big storms come, we know we're going to have water in the streets, and we can't get in or out of our houses, and in some cases, people's houses flood. So in our meetings with WM Jordan, they did come in and speak to our community, I expressed this concern, and they did some research on it. They went out and found that their stormwater outfall is going to go a different direction from ours. The problem they found was with our stormwater system, was we outfall to a VDOT ditch, and right now, it's completely overgrown. There's no money in the VDOT budget to maintain that part of the roadway ditch. I mean, VDOT doesn't want to mow the medians at this point because it costs money. So they're not maintaining that ditch. The city engineers, who I've spoken to, also said they can't maintain them because they're on VDOT property. So we're kind of stuck in the middle of all this, and even though the proposed project does say that they're going to outfall to a different direction, there could be potential tailwater issues if there's a big enough storm that comes our way. So I'm conditionally in favor of the project based on the fact that we can get our stormwater problem fixed, so if that tailwater does come our direction, it'll be able to handle it, and we won't flood anymore. We've all got issues getting in and out of our neighborhood during those events, and we just don't want to compound it. The other thing I'd like to say is, I've worked in and around Newport News for 25 years, I know WM Jordan has built a whole lot of our city, they've done a wonderful job. Working with them has been very nice, they've been very responsive to our concerns, and I think they're really trying their best not to impact us. I think it's reasonable, if there's big questions that people have on traffic, or stormwater, or any other issues, require them to post a bond and do an after-the-fact study of whatever the engineering requirement is, stormwater or traffic. If they're not meeting their goals that they predict, make them fix it. On that, like I said, I'm conditionally in favor of the rezoning. Thank you very much.
Shirley Woodlackey, oh. And I'm guessing here. Good evening, ma'am, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I didn't really have any prepared remarks.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I didn't really have any prepared remarks, so I jotted a few things down. My name is Shirley Woodlackey. I live at 301 Windwood Drive, right down the road from the intersection, which I-
Would you speak a little bit closer?
I'm sorry. I live at 301 Windwood Drive, which is right down the road at the Oyster Point intersection with Warwick Boulevard. I travel that intersection, the proposed intersection development area several times a day. As most people here know, I think everybody's experienced the nightmare of going, trying to go through the traffic several times a day during rush hour and other, other times. What brought me out here is a concern for safety, for the disappearance of the green, green areas in our city. I'll just give my remarks. I oppose the use of the forested land at 12080 Jefferson Avenue for the proposed commercial development of the nightmare, excuse me, development. The nightmare of traffic congestion at the Jefferson Avenue-Victory Boulevard intersection should be reason enough to rethings its proposed development. It seems there's not one corner of our busy roads. This city leadership doesn't wish to develop with more stacked housing units and generic storefronts and additional traffic and snarling conditions that it generates. I welcome Whole Foods to our area, but urge them to seek an alternative site in one of the numerous vacant storefronts dotted throughout our city. Please help revitalize our dead business zones instead of destroying every last bit of nature still left in our city. Development is one thing, but this is aggressive overbuilding, and it's unsustainable. I, for one, am tired of seeing every area of our city developed with these single-bedroom stacked housing units and storefronts. You, you can't go without the city. We're seeing the same thing everywhere you go. Our city has lost its character. I understand the tax revenue that this will bring to the city, and that's a bonus, but why not pump some business life into the dead zones that we have, look throughout the city and see all the, the areas that are vacant now? There's plenty to choose from. What price tag do you put on safety and convenience and traffic? I'm, I for one have had enough of this congestion, plus consider the fire and rescue down the road. How many cycles do you have to sit through at traffic when they have to trip the, the lights to go through? Three, four? I can't imagine the nightmare of having more traffic signals there and also entry driveways for this new development that's proposed. And I just urge you strongly to please keep this area as it is or consider some other alternative for this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Warren. Amber Warren. Good evening. Welcome.
I'm not much of a speaker, and I don't have too much to say, but I basically kind of second what she just said. I just feel like there's too much congestion as it is around here, and that intersection does feel very unsafe all, all times of the day, but especially during rush hour. I feel like any more development around that area would just create more congestion, more accidents. And also, it doesn't seem like there's hardly any trees around here anyways. That place has been wooded for so long. It's, it's kind of refreshing to see that and to see it go after all these years. I wonder, first of all, where the animals would go after that. It just kept getting pushed further and further back. But I just feel there's too much development around here, and for the newer developments like City Center and such that aren't even being used fully, I just feel like there could be a different way of doing this, or, as she said, finding a new location for this place instead. So that's all.
Thank you. Richard Green.
My name is Richard Green. I live at 300 Windwood Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I've been a resident of Newport News since 1959. I've watched a lot of projects grow in this city, a lot of things happen. Sometimes things can happen that kind of hurts the city. And when it takes you almost 45 minutes to get from Newport, Newport College down there, to, to Newport College, to Windwood Drive where I live, almost an hour in traffic when these shipyards out and a lot of the other traffic's happening. This is, this is a lot, too much. This, 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 this area is already congested enough, and we don't need any more congestion in this area. And another thing we have is a sewer problem here. I have to call the sewer several times a year because they have the backup. And right now, I've got city problems of mine right now. And what it comes from is the city planting trees over top of the sewer lines. And this don't, they don't come into your playlot, but it did happen when it was built, and it was a bad idea. Even engineers that come out and look at us says it's a bad idea. They don't take the trees down to get the problem cleared up. But we don't need to clear, make this problem any bigger by taking these trees down and building apartments in this area where it's already congested. Some of the most dangerous intersections in the state of Virginia is right down on Jefferson Avenue in Oyster Point. And I just want to say I, I'm not for this. I think we can build it somewhere else and build it somewhere else, and just think about this and the, the safety, and the congestion that goes on. Every time a car is sitting still burning gas, and you talk about fuel and everything, you don't have enough to even have, have an air show for the kids, for the Langley Field and the Blue Angels and all, and we sit in the traffic burning gas, they could have these shows now. I'm just, I'm just, I'm appalled. I just wish they would think about it before they go into it and build this and take it down to trees and all. It, we don't have a whole lot left here anyway. But some areas have taken them all down. They're nothing but buildings right now. You ought to go to some of these cities and see some of them. We don't need that here. And I just thank you for, and hope you all address this.
Thank you, sir. Those are all the cards I have on this item. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry?
Four.
Motion carries six with one extension.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adoption.
Six zero.
It's moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion. I really appreciated the person who talked about the Framework for the Future, because the Framework for the Future is what is being amended here and discarded, if you will. The work of citizens all across this city went into the Framework for the Future, and we often cite it as our comprehensive plan that we want to stick to because all our citizens had input into it in every single, the north section, the south section, the middle section. And then I remember sitting on that committee for two years, practically monthly meetings. And I think we did a very, very good job. It took almost another two years for it to be, for the Congress that had to approve all the sectional parts, to put it together until it finally came to council, and we approved it. There's a lot of thought that went into that and a lot of hard work for things like how much, one of the things that was, you know, how much buffers should be on different projects. For example, the project that will be heard. One of the recommendations was 70 feet, because suppose Jefferson Avenue or Warwick or Oyster Point had to be widened. If one of the things was about rail coming down, I'm sure that's way in the future, but even at that, how are you going to expand Jefferson Avenue if there's only a 30-foot buffer? Framework for the Future said it should be 70. So I, I really feel that we need to have some respect for our planning by our citizens that took several years of caring and dedication. So I will not be supporting this change. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I, I know that a lot went into the Framework for the Future, but I think that when it comes to finding ways to generate more tax revenue so that we can lighten the burdens of, of our citizens, I think sometimes we do have to make those tough choices, and I think this is one of those tough choices, because the land does belong to a private citizen, and he does have the right to develop that property. And I, I think that he is mindful of the citizens when we talk about saving the trees and how many trees we save and wetland mitigation and things of that nature. But because I think that sometimes a change is good for process, progress, excuse me, I'm, I'm going to support it.
And I did want to just add, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate the hard work of the citizens for the Framework for the Future, but I think that's what we have to keep in mind, that it is, it is a frame that can be altered and changed based on the needs of our city at a certain time. So I do, I will support it, but I do think we need to recognize, even though we build a document, it's not that it's etched in stone, and there is some room for change and, and amending it.
Okay.
If you want to say- I go back a long, long time. I feel like it's been a long, long time. I've been here ever since 1938. We moved from Norfolk to what you call Warwick County. My father worked in the shipyard. Because of World War II, he got a good job, but we had no place to move. We had no houses, no stores, no nothing, and we couldn't get it. And that was in the Southeast Community. And I still live there because I thought it was a terrible, terrible thing to never had any thing to know where to move, and you couldn't move on one street, and you couldn't move on that street, and this kind of thing. You know what I'm talking about. So I don't, we're just, just getting, just getting ready now to do something about the Southeast Community. Now, the Southeast Community is 99% of blacks. They're scared. Some people that live in Newport News have never been down to the Southeast Community. And we need something done, done about the people there. They're working hard. They're trying to get houses and stores and this kind of thing. You, you can come down to Jefferson Avenue now, and you can't hardly get to the end of it before you tear up your car because of tearing up the streets and sewers and all of that kind of stuff. And that happens. That should have been done 70 years ago. And we, we have no place to go, and people say, well, they're killing people down in the Southeast Community. They're doing this, and they're doing that, and they've never been there and there. They never know the people. I know them. I'm out of a family of 13. I had 11 brothers and two sisters, football team and two nurses. So my daddy walked the shipyard every day, and he couldn't drive a car because he never could own a car, so he couldn't drive it. But it's a shame to sit up here and say that we don't need to expand the property that we now have and for the good of the people. I don't want to go into a lot of other things that, that I experience because they always hurt me when I talk about it. But when we cannot, in this city, build comfortable housing, comfortable schools, and comfortable community centers, I got a problem with it. But we sit here and say, I just, I want it to stay just, just like it is, just like it is. But I don't want it to stay just like it is, because I built a house down there, and I'm, I can, I can build a house anywhere I want to, to be true. But I'm staying, I, I like what the Southeast Community have. I know the people down there, and I know what they're going through. 99%, 99% of black folks. And that's, that's, that's something wrong. Something's wrong with it. So we ought to be able to move and buy houses anywhere we want. But that's not this plan now, but that's what it came to. Now, we turn up all the streets down there, trying to get the waterfront. We are, we are facing a big problem down there to get to the waterfront. So I don't think that we are looking at this thing that we need to look at. We need to look at the whole picture. We are not looking at the whole picture. So I'm going to vote for this. There's no question about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry?
Four.
Motion carries five, one with one extension.
On page 38, if you're following electronically, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing change of zoning CZ 13-340 to WM Jordan Company Incorporated for property located at 12080 Jefferson Avenue from 03 office research and development to R9 mixed use with proffers. Changing, changing the zoning of the property with proffers will allow for the construction of an office, multifamily, and retail development to serve the planned future corporate research center adjacent to the site. The applicant provided proffers that address concerns regarding building, property, and transportation improvements. The proposed change in zoning is consistent with the Framework for the Future Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment recommended in PLN-13-10. On July 17, 2013, the Planning Commission voted five to two with one extension to recommend approval of the request. The city manager is now prepared to give his recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Over the last 16, 17 days, I've spent a lot of time studying this project and reflecting upon the benefits that it brings. We really feel that it's critical to the city's economic health. It really represents an opportunity to bring very high-value knowledge, jobs to our city. And frankly, this mixed-use project offers the opportunity to bring all sorts of jobs for, for everybody in our city, which is also very important. It's interesting, as I sit here, very new into my tenure, I think of almost 10 years ago when I was entering another job, and there was a research park that was proposed, which was a joint effort with another university. And during the time that I was in that city, thousands of jobs were created, high-level jobs were created in that research park. And I think this offers the opportunity to do the same here in Newport News. I've looked at a lot of the issues with staff, the drainage issues, the traffic issues, the wetlands issues, the sewer issues. I hope folks do realize there's a 30-inch sewer line that will be built for this project with a pumping station to help resolve some of the existing issues. We're aware very well of the engineering, departments are aware of the drainage problem that exists in the related subdivision, which is not related to this project, that we have been working with DOT, and will continue to work with them to help resolve. So I believe the issues are either addressed currently or will be through the development process. So I would urge the, the council to approve this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any cards? Joe Meredith. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Dr. Joe Meredith, and I live at 1094 Deerfield Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm the president of the Virginia Tech Corporate Research Center, or the CRC. I'm responsible for the Corporate Research Center component of Tech Center. The Virginia Tech CRC in 2010 was named the most outstanding research park in North America by the Association of University Research Parks. The goal of the Tech Center team here is to create a high-technology community in Newport News based on the success of the CRC. While the CRC certainly benefits from being adjacent to Virginia Tech, Tech Center will benefit from being adjacent to the Jeff Labs, near NASA, and other large corporations in the area that successfully develop intellectual property. According to a recently issued study by BATEL, a global research and development organization, research parks are seen increasingly around the world as a means to create dynamic clusters that accelerate economic growth and international competitiveness. Research parks are becoming even more integrated into regional innovation efforts and are often signature developments like Tech Center for creating the dynamic live-work-play environments that attract high-technology professionals to a region. While the CRC benefits from its location and the entrepreneurial environment in Blacksburg, the success of the CRC has been predicated on a service strategy rather than a traditional real estate development. This means that we take an active role in helping companies with their business strategy, raising capital, and attracting the best, best employees. The CRC- The CRC currently hosts over 150 high-tech companies and their 2,700 employees in a complex containing 31 buildings with three more under construction. We have developed over 1 million square feet of labs and office space. More importantly, we've created an attractive community. Today, the most sought-after knowledge workers can work anywhere. We will develop the amenities at Tech Center that have proven to be the most desirable at the CRC. We want to be the place where people want to live, work, and play. This is why doing the retail portion of the project is necessary now. We intend to combine the networking events that have been so successful at the CRC with Tech Center, so we have the maximum ability to create relationships in an extended high-tech community. We have completed the first phase of development at the CRC and learned that an emphasis on sustainability and green space is very important. We will apply these and other lessons learned at the CRC to Tech Center. Phase 2 at the CRC is designed to double the size of our complex. Our customers have told us that soccer fields, lacrosse, volleyball, basketball are all very important to their quality of life. We'll master plan Tech Center taking this into consideration. In summary, we believe that the CRC is the best model for the development of Tech Center and look forward to its implementation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Michael Dallas. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Michael Dallas. I live at 100 Yorkshire Drive in Williamsburg, Virginia. And I'm the chief operating officer for Jefferson Lab. And my comments tonight represent the opinions of the leadership of the laboratory as well as the leadership of our corporate owner, the Southeastern University Research Association, which is a consortium of over 60 universities around the United States. I'm happy that the president and CEO of Sura is here tonight, Jerry Dreher, as well as our director emeritus, Christoph Lehman, is here tonight with us also. So let me say unequivocally that Jefferson Lab and its leadership strongly support this project, and there are four reasons why we support it. First, since its founding in the mid-1980s, the lab and its owners have had a longstanding commitment to developing a technology transfer program to bring innovations of the lab's nuclear physics research mission to the marketplace. In the mid-1990s, the city of Newport News constructed the Applied Research Center as a technology incubator adjacent to the lab to begin developing this market. While that effort has brought a few spinoff companies and collaborating university researchers, we believe the project proposed by WM Jordan will be a significant and logical next step in delivering the appropriate mix of business, marketing, and educational resources needed to develop a robust technology transfer and commercialization market here in the peninsula. Second, unlike some of our sister labs that are funded by DOE, Jefferson Lab is not located or co-located on the campus of a major research university. This proximity at other laboratories has enabled the necessary university, lab, and business partnerships that have resulted in vibrant and successful tech transfer and commercialization programs that in turn have benefited the economies of those regions. The proposed Tech Center would address our goal at the lab to support a program that would both leverage the unique world-class research from the lab and serve as a catalyst for the economic development of the city, the Hampton Roads, and the state of Virginia. We believe that the Virginia Tech Foundation is an ideal partner, as evidenced by its success with its research park near the Virginia Tech campus in Blacksburg. And Virginia Tech is one of the members of the Southeastern University Research Association, so there is this longstanding and very productive relationship that has existed between Virginia Tech and the laboratory for over the years. Third, as we look to the future, we envision new research opportunities and need to expand the lab beyond its current campus to construct and operate new research facilities. The city of Newport News and WM Jordan have assured the lab that the proposed land development adjacent to the lab will not hinder the expansion of Jefferson Lab's mission and future lab requirements. For those of you who drive up and down Jefferson Avenue, I'm sure you're aware that the lab is about 70% on the way to completion of a $500 million upgrade to the laboratory, which will add many more new jobs and will bring many more new researchers and scientists from all over the world to Hampton Roads. Finally, the proposed project provides some good and tangible benefits, most notably an improved quality of life. The proposed mix of research, retail, and housing makes Newport News even more appealing place to live and work. This would improve Jefferson Lab's ability to recruit highly and often uniquely talented researchers, many of whom are considering positions at research institutions located in other areas that already offer the quality of life that the Tech Center proposes to bring to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Due to my oversight initially, I was supposed to call for an overview of the project from Mr. Diamondstein and Mr. Lindsey. I would like to ask them to come forward at this time to present that.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, Mr. City Manager, my name is Alan Diamondstein. I live at 29 Indigo Dam Road. Before I start my time, Mr. Mayor, we are pleased to bring together tonight a large crowd, as you mentioned earlier, to welcome the new city manager. So those of you who came for that purpose, please give us a round of applause. Thank you for the opportunity. I guess Josh will stand here while I'm talking.
You said you'd be quick.
Are you kidding?
I'll just cut it now. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about a project that was a concept really adopted by your predecessors almost 20 years ago. This city wanted and wants a research center. They want to start, and they tried to start with a building that could be built and made available to attract those research companies that they were hoping to attract. But as you know, and we know, those companies did not come. Newport News built the Applied Research Center in 1998, hoping that it would serve as a place where smaller companies could grow using the Thomas Jefferson National Accelerated Facility. But again, you know, and I know, they didn't come. The center couldn't offer the right kind of amenities. But now John Lawson envisions the center as a cornerstone of a large Tech Center campus, operated in collaboration with the Virginia Tech Foundation, as you've heard, and he's willing to take the financial risk to make that a reality. Working together, and you and I have had that opportunity for a lot of years, by working together, we can create a community where scientists and entrepreneurs would want to come and would want to work. WM Jordan, not the city of Newport News, private enterprise, not government, will complete the dream evidenced by your actions and your predecessors across the last number of years. And you know what? Then they'll come. It's not the building that'll ensure that they'll come. It's the entire package that's before you this evening. Charlie Harris, who's a retired NASA project manager, conceived and eventually created the National Institute of Aerospace. He shared with us a few weeks ago that he concluded from his research of successful institutes and corporate R&amp;D parks that success depends on the continual generation of hundreds of new ideas and intellectual property, an elusive, critical mass of community assets to develop the ideas, entrepreneurs to innovate and commercialize new products, and public and private partnerships. The Tech Center will satisfy all of those requirements. While the mixed-use area is currently in the spotlight because it's subject to the rezoning application, you know and I know that it truly serves in an ancillary but very critical capacity to catalyze the Tech Center Corporate Research Center from the very ground up. That's what makes this development different from any previous attempts to rezone the property. The commitment of Virginia Tech to grow the Tech Center Corporate Research Center, the commitment of John Lawson as a local developer who's a resident of the city of Newport News, the existence of the Middle Ground Boulevard extension, and for those of you who are familiar with it, the presence of Whole Foods, that's what makes the difference. You, as the mayor and members of Newport News City Council, have kept up with the times. You've taken the leadership in a series of what, for us here in Newport News, were giant steps, giant steps towards an ultimate solution. Please continue that progress tonight and vote yes on our rezoning request. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, I appreciate you hearing us tonight. I'm a Newport News resident of 1109 Riverside Drive. I was born here. I will spend the rest of my life here, and I'm proud of that. My company was founded here over 55 years ago, and most of you are aware of the close association I've had with Virginia Tech over the years. I was a chemical engineering and geophysics major there. I chaired the board of visitors there, was on the board for eight years, been on the foundation board, co-founded the School of Construction, had a lot of experience with Virginia Tech, and I saw a number of successes that they had there. Charles Steger, who happens to be the chairman of Sura that operates the Jefferson Lab, is also the president of Virginia Tech. And it was back in 2010 when I was trying to buy this piece of property, which I had admired for years. It's the best piece of property on the peninsula by far, and I didn't want somebody to mess it up in developing it incorrectly. Charles and I talked about buying it for the express purpose of expanding the Jefferson Lab. And in June of 2010, I did that. And in fact, I wrote a letter to the Department of Energy saying that I'm reserving this property for the expansion of the Jefferson Lab and the research and development zoning that was on it. Couple of years went by, had some very nice tours of the entire Jefferson Lab, the people, the scientists, saw some incredible discoveries that they've been doing, and yet they were frustrated because a lot of the new science wasn't applied to a useful commercial application. And so it occurred to me less than a year ago, wow, we're doing that at Virginia Tech at the Corporate Research Center. It's a proven model. You know, there might be an ability to do that. And so I flew to Blacksburg, talked to Dr. Steger, and said, I think that we can do both, because we had talked to the Jefferson Lab about repositioning the next expansion so that it will still fit on the site and keeping that very valuable corner open for a quality of life improvement. And lo and behold, one thing fell in place after another, and we've always, as a company, been dedicated to the environment, to green construction, sustainable design. The Newport News Green Foundation has given us two awards. I think it's, we're the only organization in the entire city that's gotten two awards for what we've done on our own campus here in Newport News and not the best area of town. So, you know, we're used to making things happen rather than waiting for things to happen. Joe Meredith, when Dr. Steger asked me to talk to him, very quickly said, one of the problems that we had with getting the Corporate Research Center at Tech going quicker is we didn't put enough emphasis on quality of life issues. And then the vision came as, we're not really selling the corner. The lane you're talking about rezoning tonight is only 20% of the investment that I plan to make here. With the land that the city and the state has behind it, we're talking about a 100-acre development, a very significant piece. The retail piece and the fitness center and the multifamily is a small part of this whole vision. What we're really talking about is greater Oyster Point and a more of a regional version because Dr. Steger pointed out to me that the very finest scientists, researchers, and entrepreneurial folks also have an interest many times in the arts. They play the violin. They like to see a Broadway play. They like to paint. And so what we're selling is the Ferguson Center and Christopher Newport and the museums that we have on the Avenue of the Arts and one of the finest medical centers, which happens to be a Level 2 trauma center right around the corner. It's complementary of City Center, of which I'm an investor, so I'm not going to compete with myself and do things at that location that would be detrimental to City Center. We're building the new 1,600-seat theater there right now. We're not going to be building a theater in Tech Center. We also have, you know, the best grocery store, an organic food store in America, in Whole Foods, and we're not going to be duplicating that in City Center. These will be complementary of each other. The internal road system is going to take a lot of traffic off of that corner. They won't even have to go to that corner. Traffic studies have been proven, and what really makes the traffic work is Middle Ground Boulevard extension. You know, the studies by both staff, VDOT, and our independent consultant all prove that it will reduce traffic. This is a concept that's hard to get your arms around. It's a concept that doesn't exist anywhere in this area. This is not mixed-use like you have thought of mixed-use in the past. This will be something that will be an award-winning development in two or three years. We plan to get the first phase finished in 18 months, and we're going to start within four months of starting construction, the first brand-new building in the new Corporate Research Center. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Mayor, I actually had a question for Mr. Lawson, but everybody was so happy with his statements, they let him go. But maybe Lindsey can answer. Yes, I had a couple of questions. Well, I know that a lot of people, a lot of the calls that I got and emails, they were concerning traffic congestion. So I just wanted you to speak a little bit about the traffic mitigation measures that you have put in place, some road improvement, intersection improvements. If you could speak a little bit to that, that would be great. And also, if you could talk a little bit about the wetlands and whether you would be using any of those and if there has to be any mitigation, what your plans are, because those are the things that were important to a lot of people who contacted me.
Okay, traffic. We're putting $3 million of our own money into traffic improvements that include extending stacking and acceleration, deceleration lanes. We're trying to take advantage of the existing signalization at Hogan Drive and over on Oyster Point to improve those. We're going to pay for the re-signalization of Oyster Point and Jefferson Avenue, as much as three miles away, to have it timed better. We're, again, putting in a new road system internally that will be open to the rest of Oyster Point and will allow people to go right-only to York County and to Pecosin if they live there, never have to go to the point at Oyster Point and Jefferson Avenue. A significant, well-engineered, this is not a trust-me thing, these are detailed scientific studies of traffic by VDOT, city staff, and our consultant. So, and with the Middle Ground Boulevard completion, which will be complete probably, certainly by this time next year, they're ahead of schedule, that is a huge way to pull traffic away from that intersection, go into the Newport News neighborhoods and access in Oyster Point. Just, it's going to be a great thing. This project would have a problem with traffic, were it not for Middle Ground Boulevard.
Thank you.
And the other part of your question was about wetlands.
Wetlands and mitigation.
One of the things that we're doing, we have 10 acres, which is, again, a big piece of property right in the center of our project that we're going to leave untouched. We're going to have walking and biking trails, and we're focusing on fitness and health and, you know, nutrition throughout this entire complex because the people that, the scientists that come here from all over the world, the researchers, hopefully you were at the announcement last night of the Virginia Tech University of Virginia graduate at the announcement last night of the Virginia Tech University of Virginia graduate student effort that the city helped fund and create, that is a perfect complement to what we're doing because we don't have that academic component. And research is done primarily with graduate students. So all of the, it's like the sun, the moon, the stars all lined up perfectly for a small moment in time that we have an opportunity. If we don't act on this and get this approved, they're gone. Whole Foods is gone somewhere else. I can't afford to sit on this land forever. All of these opportunities that, a lot of it was dumb luck, and a lot of it was just is looking at a very, very big complicated picture and forming a vision that doesn't exist anywhere, but knowing that there is a high likelihood, I mean, if I was a betting man, and I am, I'd put the chances of this succeeding at 100%. There is really no possibility that this project will fail, not with the players that we have involved, not because I don't have to go ask permission of anybody other than you to approve this rezoning. After that, I got it.
One other question. Some citizens were concerned about the efforts that you would go through to save the trees, as many trees as possible.
Right.
So what's your plan there that you could share?
Well, unfortunately, if you look at the land, when they widened Jefferson Avenue and put in the new Oyster Point Road, they raised the road bed up so high that the existing subgrade is about three, four feet below that in some cases. So that's a problem. And HRSD was mentioned by the city manager that HRSD is putting a 30-inch forest main in from Middle Ground Boulevard all the way over to the mall. And a 30-inch forest main down deep in the ground is a problem, but they have to do that for additional sewage capacity and a brand-new pump station. That alone will take most of the trees out of the buffer on Jefferson Avenue, and that has nothing to do with us. This was planned anyway. Now, what we do plan to do is we want to get all of the work done in the buffer on both Oyster Point Road and Jefferson Avenue, done at the very on-site of the project, and get it re-landscape with brand-new trees of the biggest caliper that we can put in, get it irrigated, and start that growing before the project is complete. Normally, we do that at the end for lots of reasons. Here, this is not a dense development. We want this to look like a college campus. We don't have any buildings, other than the existing Applied Research Building, that'll be above the tree line. The materials that we have on every single building in this entire complex, whether it be retail, multifamily, or the Corporate Research Center, will have matches and details and material types. So if we have brick on one building, it'll be the same color brick on the rest of it. We're planning on putting stone in, being a Hokie graduate, we're doing a Hokie stone look for all the stonework we'll have, which will be significant. Our landscaping and hardscaping and building graphics will be of the finest quality, things that you haven't seen here before. We're not planning on the same old brush concrete sidewalks and brick pavers. You can see some details that don't exist around here. This will be immaculately maintained from day one. I mean, I'm taking a personal responsibility of making sure that every detail is looked at and will be followed and taken care of. That not only I can promise, but just watch it happen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I think Lindsey wanted to add something to that, if that's possible.
Could I? Yes, exactly, exactly. Excuse me. I wanted to ask a question, please. Does the Tech Center at, this was for Mr. Meredith, really, does that have a mixed use with the Tech Center at BPI? Is that a component of it?
Yes, we have restaurants, we have a large fitness center, and we have dry cleaning and pickup. What we're trying to do is create a community, a self-containment, and that's the same vision that Mr. Lawson.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of City Council, City Manager Borey, and City Attorney Owens. I'm Lindsey Carney. I'm a partner at Patton-Warnham, Hatton &amp; Diamondstein, and I reside at 209 Hilton Terrace here in Newport News. As you indicated, it's a tough act to follow Johnny, but my job is to come in and fill in a little bit of the details. WM Jordan's commitment to developing this first-class, mixed-use Corporate Research Center that our city can be proud of and benefit from also includes an obligation and a sincere desire to be a good neighbor. The developer has met with residents from the Village Green neighborhood four times through their small leadership group, at a meeting open to the entire neighborhood, and with individual residents. As you previously heard from Mr. Roth, Village Green expressed concerns about flooding in the neighborhood. He also indicated that the developer and our team have worked to identify and confirm that the Tech Center stormwater outflow will fall to a different location than that of Village Green. The Tech Center stormwater outflow will be at Deep Creek. The stormwater flows from Village Green into a VDOT ditch on 64, then southeast towards the Oyster Point interchange. It's the opposite direction in the city from the Tech Center outfall. No outfall will receive both from Village Green and Tech Center. You've also heard that the city is diligently working with VDOT, but we'd like to reiterate again, one more time, the stormwater drainage from Tech Center will have no adverse impact on Village Green. Another detail that you heard from Mr. Lawson is that he is an investor in the City Center, and he has no desire to compete with himself. In fact, you've heard a little bit about concern for competition here in the city. We've confirmed as of today that 90% of the offices in the City Center are actually leased. Over 85% of the retail is actually leased in the City Center, which is a combined average lease rate of 90%. You've also heard issues about traffic. The developer has a traffic impact analysis that's been completed and approved by the city and VDOT. Middle Ground Boulevard Extension, as Johnny and Mr. Diamondstein have indicated, is a huge asset. By the winter of 2014, the studies show that 6% of the traffic at the intersection of Oyster Point Road and Jefferson Avenue will be removed because of that extension. This project is not going to change the level of service at that intersection. It's not going to make it any worse. But what it will do is it will provide $3 million in traffic improvements by the developer, not from the city and not from the taxpayers, that will drastically improve the flow of the traffic through that intersection and other intersections in close proximity through the re-timing that's part of that traffic impact analysis. It's not the number of cars that are creating the problem at that intersection, it's the traffic flow. Another point to reference is the design of the project was designed with pocket parking. That way, it expands the property out so that entrances and exits, if you're going to go to Whole Foods, which is on the opposite side of the property from the fitness facility, you're going to come in at a different exit or entrance. That way, the parking is spread out. Like Whole Foods, the developer has completed its due diligence on the site and has determined that it's the right place for this development for the betterment of the city. A wetlands jurisdictional determination has been finalized by the Army Corps of Engineers. As Johnny indicated, the project preserves over 10 acres of unimproved area with the mature trees as they exist today. The U.S. Department of Game and Inland Fisheries has completed its study to confirm that there are no endangered species within the vicinity of the property. As Mr. Diamondstein indicated, the rezoning application is before you for consideration and has drawn the spotlight. But just as both he and John Lawson have indicated and others have stated before us, the mixed-use area will commence together with the Corporate Research Center, and it's going to foster a walkable center that will service researchers, scientists, and other users of neighboring Jefferson Lab and the region. It's a corollary to the expansion of the upcoming Jefferson Lab expansion and a catalyst for the expansion of research and development along the Jefferson Avenue corridor. You've also heard that it's going to add in additional $3.5 million in tax revenue for the benefit of the city, which benefits the entire city without having to raise real estate taxes, and actually comes from a portion from outside the city as other users come into the city to use this regional destination. I encourage you to support the project, which will address the challenges for the city and the region that are identified by the EDA in the Framework for the Future, not the least of which are threats to the programs at Jefferson Labs, attracting state-of-the-art corporate activity, expanding the existing economic base, fostering entrepreneurial growth of the technology-based companies through liaisons with Jefferson Labs. Finally, I'd like to leave you with this. Leadership and commitment to a community like John Lawson's is a commodity that's rarely in a surplus. The shortage threatens to become critical as technology advances around the city. The proposed Tech Center and mixed-use area with the promise of the Corporate Research Center that accompanies it will help us all stay ahead of the curve. Thank you.
Thank you.
You said there was already a Corps of Engineer report that you have?
There is a jurisdictional delineation that has been approved by the Army Corps of Engineers.
The delineation, but the report from them about the wetlands has not been...
The report that I think you're referencing has to do with the mitigation plan.
Right.
There are 13 acres of wetlands on this property. 10 acres will be preserved. There will be an encroachment on the balance of that. What the developer will do is will mitigate that by purchasing mitigation off-site, and that's what's being approved.
But you don't have that report yet.
That's correct. It's been submitted correctly.
And you're saying 85% of City Center is occupied?
Yes, ma'am. That's the average that we received from Harvey Lindsey this afternoon.
The average?
The average, yes.
Thank you.
I have one question, and this was a little confusing for me. In the parking portion, it said that 450 spaces were required, but there will be 390. I mean, did I confuse that issue or something?
Are you looking at the master plan, perhaps?
No, it was in the Planning Commission's notes.
That for 300 units, you would need 450 spaces, but you have 390 right now.
Correct. At the original plan submission, there were not enough spaces to park for 300 units. So we were going to reduce the number of units. However, the engineers have come up with a plan where there can be parking under the building that would allow for sufficient parking without requesting an exception for that part of it to park for 300 units.
So you will have 450 parking spaces for 300 units?
Whatever's required by the ordinance, yes.
Well, maybe I confused it a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Segaloff?
Good evening, sir. Good evening. My name is Walter Segaloff, 10858 Warwick Boulevard. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of City Council, our new city manager, welcome. I'll address two points regarding the Tech Center overall project. First, I speak as both a local businessman and the founder of the successful Achievable Green Educational Program. From the retail development perspective, the Tech Center is an excellent development. It's almost a dream project because it requires no public funds, no subsidies, all private monies, no tax incentives by the cities or the EDA. This doesn't happen often. It doesn't reshuffle existing retail stores from one site to another. It brings all-new, at this time, 80% retail outlets that are not presently on the peninsula. That's unusual. It brings $3.6 million of real estate tax to the city versus $86,000 that is paid now. This is extremely important to our school systems, our police, our fire departments, and the other services that we all use and demand. This combination makes the Tech Center a positive real estate development on its own. The second reason for speaking tonight is 20 years ago, I started an Achievable Green program. It was an idea that, and behind that idea was to prove that all kids, regardless of race, culture, or poverty, could learn, and if the playing field was leveled. And you were the school board chairman at that time that gave me permission to start that program. Over this 20-year journey, in partnership with the public school systems and the business community, we have leveled the playing field. We have proved beyond any doubt that all children can learn if the playing field is leveled. We presently have 1,500 kids in the Achievable Green program, including 285 kids in college or the military. We've always had challenges. We've always had to meet those challenges. People always ask me, what do I worry about? At first, I worried about closing the achievement gap between minority and majority, a 20-to-30-point difference, and we closed that gap. The next challenge was trying to get our kids SOL prepared and beyond, and we solved that. Now, we worry about how to get our kids workforce-ready for the jobs of tomorrow that we really can't all define, that are being developed today in places like Virginia Tech Center in Blacksburg. They are developing the jobs, the Jefferson Labs, they're developing these jobs that our kids have to be ready for. Now, we have to worry about how do we get them into college and technical schools and how to pay for it so they don't come out with huge debts. Well, to this date, I must say that we have done that brilliantly, and we have, for the last three, 94% of all of our kids have gone on to college. The other 6% have either gone into the military or to technical schools. 63% of our kids graduate college within five years. That's higher than any number that you've got nationally for total, the whole population. There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of chatter throughout the communities today about STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math. And this is important for our future, and that's what we're talking about. But it's easy to say STEM, and it's easy to say 21st-century jobs. They roll off your tongue very easily. You always hear it in conversation, and a lot of us don't even know what we're talking about, but we use these terms. But it's a hell of a lot harder to make these jobs happen than it is to just talk about them. My current worry is that there will, will there be enough of these jobs in science, technology, engineering, and math in Newport News and on the peninsula so that my kids, our kids, your kids, who graduate college and technical schools can find these 21st-century jobs here at home in Newport News, so that my kids, your kids again, can earn a good salary and become part of the American dream and that they can have their own achievable dream? On May 1st, 13.2% of our minority population was unemployed compared to 6% of the majority. The 750 to 800 jobs created by the mixed-use area of this project alone will offer many of my students and their parents good jobs and opportunities to a better lifetime, part-time jobs for these kids after school and in the summer. We all know that the best remedy to fight poverty, crime, and drugs is a job. The chief of police is back there, just ask him. A job helps create a productive, law-abiding citizen. The research tech park is the other unique dynamic of this project.
Mr. Segaloff, may I ask you to close, please?
Right. It not only helps us diversify our employment base from federal and private employment, but the Tech Center doesn't talk about STEM jobs, it creates them. And I would ask you each to consider that and vote yes for this project.
Thank you.
I don't believe I have the full five minutes, so part of my time can go to him. I have something to hand out for you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Tom Howard, and I live at 632 Brandywine, a resident of Village Green in the Central District of Newport News. My family moved here from Hawaii in 2009 to complete a 30-year Navy career because of what Newport News has to offer. We're thrilled at the decision we made. I retired in 2011 as a Fleet Master Chief for the Atlantic Fleet. Thank you to Councilwoman Vick and Councilman Coleman, who obviously are not from Central District, however took the time from their schedules to speak to us and, in Councilman Coleman's case, met with a group in Village Green. Your response to our calls meant a great deal to each of us and is a testament to your apparent concern of the issues the citizens of Newport News have. Others of you have received correspondence in varying forms, both for and opposed to the rezoning and potential development. I trust you have all done your homework. The representatives of WM Jordan have met with the neighborhood of Village Green on multiple occasions. On each occasion, they have shown what appeared to be genuine interest in our concerns over the proposed rezoning of the parcel of land at the intersection of Oyster Point and Jefferson Avenue. They have answered each of our questions and concerns with a professional response and, in most instances, have gone what I would say is beyond their scope of responsibility to mitigate each concern with a solution or feedback on where the challenge may lie. This area is one of the last vestiges of quasi-undeveloped yet highly-regarded parcels in Newport News. With so many vacant structures throughout the area, one might ask, why remove a small forest for the development of another shopping mall? That's a very good question and one I'm sure each of you have discussed at length for a very long time. Will this development impact positively City Center, Port Warwick, and Patrick Henry Mall, as well as other districts, and entice future retail and restaurant owners to plead for a space to market their goods? Unfortunately, I don't nor I dare say you have a crystal ball. The question each of you must answer is, am I willing to, based on the track record of Whole Foods' development, vote in favor of rezoning to facilitate this potential? It appears Whole Foods' track record may have that crystal ball prediction for you. I stand before you recommending each of you approve the rezoning request, but at the same time, you hold the developer to their word that, as such, this parcel does in fact become a village of grocery, restaurant, retail, and perhaps, most importantly, research and technology center that further diversifies the city's professional landscape. I... I ask that you assist us in a few areas. The assurance guarantee that our current stormwater system will be corrected for the three hundred and forty-six homes in the Village Green community, a correction that should have been professionally mitigated during the widening expansion of Interstate sixty-four, which are neighborhood borders on the northeast. That city traffic engineers take another look at how to mitigate the current and future traffic quagmire, which, based on the current scale, truly can't get any worse, but in the back of each of your minds, you know will. And finally, I ask that the environmentally green aspect of the north section of Oyster Point between Hampton Roads Academy and Palmer Lane, as well as the south section of Oyster Point between Cannon Boulevard and Palmer Lane, with a hundred-foot buffer be placed in a conservation easement. Many will ask that your vote on this issue tonight be tabled, delayed, or postponed until these and other issues can be further addressed and/or validated. I leave that decision up to you as you speak for and discuss on behalf of the citizens who voted each of you into your current office. In closing, for every job that is created by this development, to include the construction, another citizen becomes a contributing member of our society and city, and tax revenues are created. Thank you for the opportunity.
David Hall. David Hall.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Hall. I live at twenty-seven John Quillane here in Newport News. I'd like to make three points about the developer for this project. The first being that the WM Jordan campus is probably one of the most understated and perfectly manicured campuses in the city of Newport News, as far as I know. The second is that John Lawson parks his car at the front door every day, so he's accessible to everybody. The third is that I think we were all very fortunate to have him tackle such a project as this and lead us to the fruition of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul Trapp.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of council. I'm Paul Trapp with Timbers Group. We prepared the traffic study for this project. I'm only here if you have any questions tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rick Gallier.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, city manager, vice mayor, council. It's an honor to be before you. I'm president of the Pomoka Water Group, and we're located on twelve six-two-nine Jefferson Avenue, twelve six-two-seven Jefferson Avenue, and twelve six-two-five Jefferson Avenue. And I'm speaking on behalf of my partners, Steve Adams, Gary Mentor, Henry Air, and Bill Hayes. And we looked at this project and how it affects us as businessmen in the community. And when we run our business, we run on this principle. Everybody has to win, and that's the equation. Anyone is on the losing side of that, every all loses. Consumer has to win. Employees got to win. Company has to win. So, we looked at this in this way. We see this as a win-win project. What we see is the city winning, additional revenue. We, in turn, we see our property values increase. City wins again. We see the consumer wins, options. We see the business wins, more opportunities. We depend on traffic. We see job creation a winner. We see high-tech jobs, high-paying jobs, a winner. We see quality of life, a winner. We see in the retail sectors being brought in retailers that are destination retailers. And I'm speaking of Whole Foods. I travel to Virginia Beach. I'm speaking of PF Chains. I travel over there, so do a lot of my employees. If I just looked at those two retailers, it tells me what they think of the project. They, if you look at PF Chains, they've got six restaurants in the state of Virginia. One in Virginia Beach, one in Richmond, and the rest in Northern Virginia. We ought to be proud to have such a retailer here. Whole Foods has ten. One in Virginia Beach, one at Short Pump, one at Charlottesville, rest in Northern Virginia. This, to me, really puts quality to the project and what we are about to have happen here, if y'all will consider it. And then the other thing that's such a win, there's no government dollars in it. That's unheard of. There's no tax advantages. Unheard of. And then the last part, being led by an individual who's extraordinaire, a leader with vision, and a company that operates the same way. And I can personally testify to that. We've been associated with WM Jordan to build four different dealerships, and they've all come in on time and on budget. We've had two renovations come in on time and on budget. What Johnny says, Johnny does, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Stargel. Okay. Evan Grumble. Grummel, I'm sorry. Evan Grummel. Henry Morgan. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager. My name is Henry Morgan. I live at two-two oh four-eight Ballard Creek Drive. I speak to you tonight as a regional citizen and ask that you approve this rezoning. While this proposed development is vital to the city of Newport News, it is also vital to the entire peninsula and the Hampton Roads region, in my opinion. It is more than the jobs. It is more than the expanded tax base. It is more than the immediate positive effect and positive economic impact. It is a chance to partner with a leader in research and technology, one of the preeminent institutions of higher learning in our country. The Tech Center is an incredible opportunity for you to change the image and the appeal of our area to businesses throughout our nation and perhaps our world. The synergy that will ultimately result from the Tech Center being in close proximity to the accelerator facility, Newport News Shipbuilding, the National Institute of Aerospace, and NASA may very well catapult Newport News, our community, to a special place among prospective locations for scientific development and entrepreneurial viability and spirit. That spirit cannot thrive in a vacuum. It must exist to flourish in a mixed-use type development. They are looking for people, frankly, that are a lot younger than you and I. Those people will walk and rather bicycle to work. Many of them won't even have a car. They really look for that vibrancy that the gentleman from Virginia Tech spoke of so eloquently that is only found in a mixed-use development. I believe if approved, that the critical mass necessary would be attained. And I don't know why we could not become a Silicon Valley or a Research Triangle. It's easy to say we can't. I believe John Lawson's the right guy to say we can. That is the icing on the cake. We have an opportunity to build this very important project on a very important piece of land with a local businessman that genuinely cares about the city and the surrounding area. WM Jordan Company and John and his family have already demonstrated their love and concern and care for this city by their involvement with and their contribution to education, the arts, athletics, charities, and on. They are absolutely unequal in the development world for their integrity. They will do what they promise, oftentimes more. Wherever John and WM Jordan Company have stepped, their footprint has always been an improvement, and they will leave this parcel and this city a better place if we let them. There will be some challenges for sure, like traffic and stormwater, but they will be engineered and mitigated to the best ability. The cost of this project is overwhelmed by the benefit of this project, and so I urge you for all of Hampton Roads to approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Patrick Minney.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and city manager. My name is Patrick Minney. M-I-N-N-E-Y, not Minnie Mouse. I reside at two-one zero eight Village Green Parkway in the Village Green community. My house sits where, when I'm sitting on my front porch, I can see Oyster Point Boulevard. And I sent the city a letter supporting this zoning change and this development for a variety of reasons, primarily as a father and a resident of Newport News and a teenage daughter who consistently tries to find work, who drives all the way to Busch Gardens to be employed, which is a safety concern when she's driving home at twelve o'clock at night after the park closes because she can't find a job in Newport News. This development brings jobs to the demographics of our area. You hear everybody talking about the technology twenty-first century, and that's all good, but that doesn't speak to the current demographics and the people looking for jobs in the Newport News area. And technology brings, as you've heard, outsiders in, and those outsiders have to come in to create jobs. So, futuristically, yes, the technology is great, but the multi-zoning allows for jobs to be created now. The other issue I'd like to address is traffic. As a retired military policeman, traffic is one of my hobbies. Literally, I sit on my front porch and watch traffic when I'm not working. It's not a traffic flow problem. While I welcome the developer doing the traffic studies and doing the traffic light issues and whatnot, but when you watch it, it boils down to the inconsiderate drivers that pull into the middle of the intersection. So, to complain about a development going to contribute to the traffic problem, it's not the development. It's the inconsiderate drivers, and you see them every day. The city did a great thing when they put the cameras in at the intersection of Oyster Point and Jefferson because it cleaned up a lot of that. I'd love to see one of those cameras at the intersection of Village Green and Oyster Point, but I only share that, that it's not a traffic flow issue from my perspective. It's inconsiderate drivers. So, I ask that we don't hold back on the decision for this development on some of these items because if you really look at them, the stormwater, it's not the development's issue. It's a different issue. And so, please look past those and recognize that the developer has reached out to the community and has addressed these issues, even though they're not really their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Herring.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Price, councilwoman, councilwoman, staff. I'm Dr. Angela Herring. I live at eleven Diggs Drive in Newport News. And this is a private-use project, but it really does affect the city, and it really doesn't allow for a lot of citizen input in the process. And I feel the framework for the future, which has been a voice for the people, has been changed. The main reason I would ask you to oppose the zoning change is quality of life, and I've heard that mentioned, and I guess it depends on who defines quality of life. In terms of quality of life, this is an intersection that I use on a daily basis, going and coming from where I live, which is a little bit too far north to be convenient for Middle Ground, which is coming. That is a really congested, that is a problem intersection now. It's a problem a good portion of the time. And six percent of the traffic's going to be alleviated to Middle Ground. It's hard for me to say. Six percent doesn't sound like a whole lot. A second quality of life issue is the trees. All those trees are going to come down. I've got the information from the planning session. Some new ones probably will be planted. A buffer is called for, but it hasn't been called a tree buffer. I think green space really adds to quality of life, and I think we have enough mixed use, and I think there are other places this could be put that would be equally accessible to Jefferson Lab, to NASA. I just hate to see all of that go. That is just a treat for the eyes and the mind in a busy city that's continuing to fill in spaces. In terms of quality of life, it could mean the difference between life and death when public safety is compromised. As fire and police, who must travel on one of our two main roads, Jefferson and Warwick, to aid residents of this long, narrow peninsula, are delayed by more traffic and more traffic lights. And that really is an unfortunate situation that we're in in the city, that we are so long and so narrow that it's just those two roads that they have to go to, to use. Quality of life, I can't imagine any store, including Whole Foods, that could tempt me to say yes to trading retail and apartments for congestion, loss of green space, and compromised public safety. So, I know I speak for a good number of citizens in Newport News to consider our quality of life, as well as the residents of the peninsula and who come to Costco and use that intersection a lot, and please vote no to the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Royden Goodson.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Well, good evening. I'm Royden Goodson, one oh two Riverside Drive. Been a resident of Newport News since nineteen fifty-five, and I am supporting the proposed zoning change. The quality of life thing, I guess, is in the eye of the holder, but it really is important. My wife and I have three children. They're all in their twenties. One of them lives in DC. I guess there's more congestion there. One of them lives in Chicago. There's more congestion there. One lives in Denver. One of them doesn't own a car. One of them rides a bike to work. One of them takes a bus to work. All three of them can tell you where the Whole Foods is. It's amazing. It's a shopping center. It's a grocery store, but it's important to people in their twenties. And it doesn't seem that way to me, but it seems that way to them. In fact, our middle daughter in Chicago moved her apartment specifically to be closer to the Whole Foods. So, don't really understand it, but I can tell you it's important. And I think the whole tech park idea works a whole lot better with the mixed-used zoning, so I am in favor of that zoning change.
Thank you, sir.
Don Smith.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Mayor Price, council. I'm Don Smith, five hundred Central Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia. As one of the owners of Radius Apartments and Jefferson Marketplace, we support and welcome the proposed project. We feel this project will complement and enhance our project. Quality, responsible development raises the standard of future development. We are currently ninety-two percent leased at the Radius Apartments after the first year and ninety-four percent leased at Jefferson Marketplace. The study conducted based on census data during our rezoning three years ago- The study conducted based on census data during our rezoning three years ago showed that Newport News only retains 23% of the people with a median income to reside in Newport News. We believe we have improved those numbers with our project, and we continue to progress with this project. There's a high percentage of aging apartments in Newport News, and that was an issue in our rezoning. The idea of building new apartments with more amenities will only enhance the ability to retain those employees in Newport News and spend their dollars. Fortunately, Newport News has a developer with a vested interest in Newport News, a developer who will only produce quality, responsible developments with the ability to complete that proposed development, which everyone knows has been an issue in the past. I believe continued growth is essential to the economic life of Newport News, and we support this project.
Thank you, sir. Troy Parker. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Troy Parker. I'm the leasing agent and partner for Jefferson Marketplace, which Mr. Smith just spoke of. I came here tonight just to express that we support the project here, and we feel that basically our center is very strong on its own. Our tenants do very well there. We have one vacancy left. We're 50% leased on our last building that'll be built next year. And Firehouse Sub, just so you guys know, is one of the top three in the country every week. They do a phenomenal business. The yogurt shop, can't be happier, make an extremely good profit. All our tenants are very happy. This project will not hurt us, but help us, and we're excited to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Dennehy. Dennehy, I'm sorry. Good evening, ma'am. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Kathy Dennehy. I'm speaking, I live at 724 Plymouth Circle. And I stand before you tonight to urge you to oppose the change in zoning, which I fear right now might be a moot point, actually. Of course, I'm concerned about the increased traffic in the area, especially when it takes me sometimes 30 minutes to get from Village Green Parkway to Jefferson Avenue. But I'm mostly concerned about the need to develop this city with more real estate, retail space, when there's so many existing vacant properties. Numerous stores in city center, Talbets, J. Jill, Banana Republic, Nia Day Spa, just name a few, are now vacant. There have also been sections of there that have never had vacancies. Go up the road to Patrick Henry Place, and that's been a ghost town from the beginning. And I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up Denby, where you have Hills, Farmore, Kmart, and the whole area appears abandoned. I realize the argument for losing the stores and city centers due to them being lured by Hampton through tax incentives, but what's to say the new stores in this development won't have the same problem? And what does that do to the tax revenue you're looking to get from those retail stores? I also understand that Patrick Henry Place had a problem with the road positioning to get to there. Well, what about the $3 million in road improvements applying it to access to Patrick Henry Place? Denby is a logical choice for Whole Foods, especially given the large area that's vacant up there, and the Whole Foods effect, which does talk about gentrification of an area, would be a welcome event, a welcome effect up there. We don't need this in the Oyster Point area. We have numerous restaurants, grocery stores, apartments, gyms, more. Sure, the residents of the North District reappreciate the opportunity, opportunity to have the benefits of Whole Foods and what comes along with it. I'm not against development. I'd love to see high-tech and high-end jobs come to this area. I personally believe we can do a better job of promoting the existing amenities to lure them here versus new development. In closing, I urge you, the council members from the other districts, to take the lead from Dr. Woodbury, the voting representative of the Central District, who is listening to her constituents, and to vote in a similar matter as she. Thank you very much.
Gary Warren. Gary Warren. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
My name's Gary Warren. I'm a resident of James City County. I live at 2420 Reserve Drive. I was asked to come here tonight to talk about the tech center. I want to give you a little bit of background about me because I think it'll put in context my support of this, this plan. I was a research scientist at NASA Langley Research Center for about 14 years, and I've been involved with three different startup companies since then. I left NASA back in 1996 and started a small software company called UR Labs. You have to excuse me. I'm like, very thirsty. Actually, I was going to ask you a favor. I didn't, I drove through Oyster Point on my way here today, and I, that intersection that's there, I was involved with Symantec, if you remember that building that went in. So I'm very familiar with the area and the, how appealing that area is. And I, so I drove through there today at 5:30. And I do want to say that there is an error in the traffic analysis that I read, is that most entrepreneurs, if they're leaving work at 5 o'clock, then the center's probably failed. It's usually like 7, 8 o'clock. But I'm involved with a medical device company right now, and I just wanted to give my experience a little bit with this medical device company that we have. I've recruited people back into the area. We have, we have 10 people in our company right now, and one of our young biomedical engineers is from UVA, who left the area and we recruited him back. Our chief science officer is from Virginia Tech, and he left the area. We recruited him back. One of our software developers is from CNU, left the area. We recruited him back. And I want to tell you that it's very hard, as a startup company, to recruit people. It's about the culture. And I have started three companies, as I've said, in this area, and I will tell you that it's very hard to find space because a startup company is not about two people, three people, that you put in a small room. The critical time happens when you have four to 20 or four to 30 people, which is kind of where our company is now. And you're looking for that, you know, 5, 6,000 square foot space. And I've tried to get into Oyster Point, and I can't because it's full. I can't, I can find small spaces, but I can't find that 5, 6, 7,000 square foot area. I've been in, in the Jefferson Lab building before with one of the companies that we had, and the culture is very important to recruit people. And we fight that every day. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Our chief science officer that I mentioned, that's from Virginia Tech, lives in a, he's a single guy, lives now in an apartment in northern James City County. Probably spends a lot of time on E-Harmony. Not much going on up in that area. The patent attorney that we have is from northern Virginia. He recruits, he commutes down here on a weekly basis, and he's always begging and borrowing every small hotel around the Williamsburg area to find a place to stay during the week. And the culture, to keep a culture vibrant in a company, you need this kind of activity that is being proposed here. And I think that, you know, you can't answer all the questions tonight, but I think the vision is there. And being at NASA Langley, I will tell you, you cannot recruit people into a 30-year-old building in Oyster Point. I've tried that. It doesn't work. It has to be cool. And if you want evidence of that, look at the colleges now. When we went to college, what were the dorms like? Have you seen the dorms at CNU? That's what the 25 to 40-year-old crowd expects. And that's what we have to do as small companies, is we have to offer that to people, to recruit them and keep them in this area. So, that being said, it's, I know it's getting kind of warm in here, but I fully support this. And actually, this is anecdotal, but before I left the office today, I asked all the guys and girls that worked there what they thought of the plan, and we talked about it. And they thought it was pretty cool. And they asked right away, are we going to be able to move there, and can we work on some of the spin-off technologies that we're talking about in our company? So I'm telling you, this is a very needed project, and it's just coming from somebody that has done this several times. And I will tell you that the Newport News traffic is nothing compared to Atlanta. So.
Corey Steele.
Sir, I just wanted to comment. Our economic development person that was over there, I'm sure she can help you find someplace here in Newport News.
Yeah, but I, I want to be clear that it's about the culture, and we were showed a lot of places. And I, again, I can't recruit people in the 30-year-old buildings. It's very hard.
She'll show you some new ones.
Corey Steele. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Corey Steele. I'm a resident of 174 Lauris Circle in Newport News. I want to start off on kind of a positive note, the things that I do like about the development. I like that it's going to be a tech center. It's in a great location, you have to admit. I'm a big fan of WM Jordan. I used to work at the Virginia League Museum when they built that. I recognize that development is inevitable, and those trees can be regrown. They're not exactly old growth trees to begin with. And that the wetland impacts, I feel, are reasonably minimized. I used to do wetland delineations and, and permitting. But none of that really matters if I can't get home from work in the afternoon. I work in Oyster Point off of Rock Landing Drive, and I go down Cannon Boulevard, get on Oyster Point, go all the way to the end, and my house is near Menchville High School. That is 4.5 miles, and that takes me over 30 minutes some days. That is an average speed using a GPS of less than 20 miles an hour. I often have to sit at the intersection trying to cross Jefferson for half of that time, where I am waiting through five different light cycles. I'm a motorcyclist. I try to do my part and minimize gas usage and road usage, and I often am baking in the sun waiting because I am actually not moving the entire time. Some of the traffic mitigation that the developer has proposed, it basically amounts to widening some turn lanes, which we certainly do need, and adjusting some timing of lights. I really don't think that's sufficient. There is a problem right now at Jefferson and Oyster Point. It needs to be fixed now, and what is being proposed is really not going to fix it. They're also relying on the Middle Ground Boulevard extension to help take away the added traffic that they're going to put at that intersection. The purpose of that Middle Ground Boulevard extension is to alleviate traffic at Jefferson and Oyster Point. It was not intended to increase capacity for further development. They will immediately add that traffic back, thereby negating all of that benefit. So a lot of these people I'm hearing are, that are talking up here are certainly going to benefit from a lot of the development here and have worked with WM Jordan, but I have a feeling that none of them are driving down Oyster Point at 4:30 or 5:00 in the afternoon. So I am not in favor of the proposed development and the zoning change based on traffic, and I would ask you to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hughes. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
How are you, sir? Sorry, let me put on my glasses. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Hughes with Whole Foods Market, the Mid-Atlantic Division. I'd like to say that Whole Foods Market has been part of the Tidewater area since we opened our Virginia Beach store. We have long wanted to be part of, part of the Newport News community. We were approached by a developer to locate our store in the tech center. We knew this would be an excellent way to bring Whole Foods to Newport News. So, at Whole Foods Market, one of our core values is caring about our community and our environment. We're very concerned about the environmental impact of all of our stores, all of our stores. So, we will work with the developer to ensure that taking the necessary steps to meet all the requirements of the federal government, Commonwealth of Virginia, and the city of Newport News. We absolutely appreciate all of the open forums that have been presented to the community, and we look forward to joining the Newport News community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Shapiro.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
I'm going to be quick. Sorry, guys. I'm here on two, for two things. First of all, I am the treasurer of the Newport News Green Foundation, and the Newport News Green Foundation has, as was said earlier, given WM Jordan two awards, which we've never done before. I'm just going to say this project is, is representative, based on what I've seen of what this gentleman does when he develops something. He does it when somebody isn't asking him to do it, when somebody codes compliance, isn't saying you must plant an extra tree, you must put an extra shrub. He's not trying to get around the system. And we've recognized that on his other developments as, and I'm the treasurer of the foundation. So we think that we would like to support the project for what he has done for this community and for landscaping and for keeping Newport News a wonderful place to live, work, and play up till now. My real job is, I'm a commercial real estate agent. I look forward to having some national quality level retailers that are here that have not first come to every other city and every other suburb in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's very hard, I've done retail since 1992 here, it's very hard to attract a retailer to the peninsula. People want to go to the big cities first. They want to go to the big city suburbs second. They want to go to the tertiary, secondary markets, which Virginia Beach type Chesapeake is third. And then, if they develop enough synergy, they come to us. It is extremely hard, numerous calls, numerous trips to the International Council Shopping Center, to try and get this type of quality retailer here. And we frequently beat our heads against the wall. And this project is bringing two great retailers here, and others follow in their footsteps, as any developer will tell you. So, from a personal standpoint, I'm not looking forward to having to compete with that center, but I'm very happy to have them there, and I think they'll do well for the city, and I think they'll do well for the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Abby Charbonneau. I'm sorry. I'm having difficulty reading.
Joy Charbonneau.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for letting me have a chance to speak. As stated, my name is Joy Charbonneau. I live at 576 Crown Point Drive. I am a Newport News resident. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a Village Green homeowner. Before I start, I want to just say one thing. I did not attend the meetings that was held by WM Jordan, the lawyers, and that in the past because I attended the very first city council, Newport News Council meeting where they presented their plan, and we did not know anything about it. They did not come and seek our advice prior to all these wonderful plans. As now, they have been wonderful, but one of the ladies up here stated to them that it was actually unfortunate that they did not seek us out prior to doing all of this information. Once that was said, the phone didn't stop ringing. They were over all the time. Again, very professional and definitely want to hear what we have to say and do our, the best to help us. I am not against change. I am 100% for it. True change. True change can stimulate an economy, rejuvenate a community, and that's all what we're looking for. But in my opinion, this proposed plan does not, pardon me, introduce enough change yet, especially not for me to endure the chaos that it's definitely going to cause when they start the construction and zoning and building of this wonderful project. The plan introduces another fitness center. There are three within a three-mile radius. The plan introduces more retail restaurant storefronts like City Center, Port Warwick, and many other similar developments. Where's the change? The plan introduces Whole Foods to our area. After hearing, I guess it has been in our area, just not in Newport News. I apologize. Never heard of them. I don't know what they're about. I'm going to appreciate their brand, but I'm not going to appreciate the chaos they may cause by coming here. The plan introduces a multifamily complex less than .5 miles away is another multifamily complex. I don't think it's very old either. Looks pretty nice. The plan is going to encroach on 2.9 acres of 13 acres of wetlands. I don't think that's a good change. The plan is going to create congestion and traffic during construction and after. And to elaborate on my fellow neighbor, yes, it is inconsiderate drivers. And now we're going to invite a whole lot more to our And now we're going to invite a whole lot more to our area. That does not solve the problem. Jefferson and Oyster Point is the third dangerous intersection in the state. Talk about a change, that should be something we change. Personally, I feel like a prisoner in my neighborhood. I have said it, I can't get in, I can't get out because of the inconsiderate drivers and the many more that are going to come. I don't care about the timing of the lights, I just want to be able to get through the In the plan, the traffic will not improve, their words, but it won't get any worse. When we're talking about change, shouldn't that be something we try to change? Let's make it better. Again, I love to go to the gym and Whole Homes, but if I can't get to it, I can't pull into that entryway, I'm not going. I'm going to somewhere where I can get to it. So I encourage the planners to research the past developments. Have they stimulated the economy? What you're all proposing to do, I hear huge amounts proposed. That is, if it is a success, 100%. There's no average, there's no based on 50% occupancy. If this is 100%, perfect, they're going to get those revenues. What if it's not? And are we taking the revenues from somewhere else in Newport News? We can travel around Newport News all day long and name off every development that has been said 10 times tonight that is empty. Why can't we put Whole Foods there? Stimulate that economy, rejuvenate that community, which is still in Newport News? Keep the proposed site for research. Okay, wait, 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 research status change, perhaps we need to figure out how to lure them here, figure out how to get the research here. So perhaps leaving a beautiful area, beautiful, reducing traffic and congestion and preserving our wetlands is the right change.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Move in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilman Whitaker.
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0 with one abstention.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. I saw this project and met with Mr. Diamondstein and Mr. Lawson and I thought it was a beautiful, beautiful project. And I felt at the time that I could support it until I started looking at some of the problems that it would occur, not just if this were a two-part procedure and it was just research and development, which is what the comprehensive plan, framework for the future, had in mind, I could absolutely support it. But then I started looking and I had asked Mr. Lawson what he was going to do about the wetlands, what he was going to do about the drainage problems, and he informed me that he was going to put these huge containers underneath the ground to collect. And so doing a little research on that, that is a trend in Japan where they have multiple columns of these underneath. And then I heard about the fact that they had done this in Williamsburg at the outlet mall and that they are, they were not successful. They are having to dig them up as we speak and redesign. Because you see, you've got to have somewhere for all of that water that is being collected in those containers under the ground to go and you have to have a pump station. Are we going to pump it into the Chesapeake Bay, which is already polluted? Are we going to pump it into James River, which is already polluted? And so that's, that's a problem for me. Hampton in Newport News last year was fined by the EPA over $100,000 and we whittled it down a little bit for improper monitoring stormwater. That was tax money that we had to pay because of our storm weather. We are an older city and our stormwater system is in need of a lot. Our infrastructure is old, yes, but we don't need more problems with it. We are going to vote tonight on two projects in our city, one for $400,000 and one for $600,000 that have to do with drainage in the Bayberry section and drainage off Harper's Hill Road where we have serious flooding problems. This is not about Mr. Lawson and WM Jordan. It is a fine, fine, he's a fine developer. He, I'm a commissioner with the HRT, Hampton Roads Transit. He built both of those buildings. I know he does quality work. There's no question about his integrity and about what he can achieve. And I do believe, as he and Mr. Diamondstein said, they, they do care about our city. And I really wish that I could fully support this, but I am really concerned. And I'm concerned because four years ago, Mr. Diamondstein was arguing against this when William &amp; Mary wanted to do the very same project. Seems a little strange to me. I have to listen to the people at my church, one of them is very much for it, but a 90-year-old and his wife who live in Village Green, he was an Air Force pilot in Second World War, said to me as we were leaving, you know, I just wish people would keep their promises. We've lived in that village so long and now we're going to have all these problems. And they're 90 years old. He just celebrated his big birthday party last fall. Another one in my choir is in his 80s and he said to me, Pat, do the right thing for us. I've had so many emails and so many calls from my constituents that I can't not listen to that. I am an educator. There is nothing I like better than research and development and high tech. My husband had the first Commodore computer. He's a NASA engineer. He had the first one in all around. I mean, I, I didn't even know what a computer was at that time. So we are not against change and we are not against wonderful projects, but I just feel that our planning department and the planning commission did not give this project full vetting before passing it on to us with, you know, again, we don't have the Army Corps of Engineer. And I like for everybody to play by the same rules. And when the, when the framework for the future says we should have a 70-foot buffer, we ought to have a 70-foot tree buffer there. Maybe I'm old fashioned that way, but that's about integrity to me, too. So I just, I really, does anybody remember? I do because I lived here. New Market North and the flooding problems in New Market South, which was in Newport News, the other one was in Hampton. And they were horrendous and it's because they had not been fully investigated and checked out and planned for. And that's what planning to me should be about. I, I just, I've had calls on this for every other day and I just, when trying to make, one person said to me, do you know that there are 918 homes for sale by realtors? She's a realtor. And probably, and that's just the realtors, not even the ones that are for sale by, by private owners. One website, 665 apartments, one website, multiply that by so many others. It is a traffic nightmare. When I'm there, I do everything I can not to drive down Oyster Point or Jefferson at that, you know, at the time. It is really. I'm sure that it may help some to have Middle Ground. I'm hoping it will. I'm counting on it. But I am not, I, I'm just really, you know, because I really would love to see this project. I would love to see the advantages of it and I'd love to be able to support that and I certainly do support the research and development. And Virginia Tech, and I was at the party yesterday and the excitement of that is, of the combination and the collaboration between UVA and Virginia Tech is unheard of. They've never agreed on anything before. And so that's going to be a wonderful asset, I believe. But in all my good conscience, I just, at this point, I have some real concerns about the drainage problems, about the traffic problems, and they have to at this point, and all of my constituents who have so solemnly and so seriously asked me to not let this happen, I, I won't stop it, but I at least have to vote what I believe my constituents want me to vote. So thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. I, I do realize that it is a traffic situation and I always tell people, I'm often late because I'm a poster child for the road referendum that failed a few years ago, but this project, I don't think it's going to make it any worse. I drove yesterday, I drove yesterday from Hogan Road up to Denby, up to Oyster Point and Jefferson and it's a little over three tenths of a mile and that's going to be the first egress-ingress for this project. So I, I don't think that it will make it any worse. I've also traveled at other countries around the world and in a lot of countries now, they make live, work, play environments. And those environments, even though it may not solve this Oyster Point problem, it does help mitigate the congestion because people, when they get off from work, they don't have to drive anywhere, or they don't have to drive to work. They're already in the community where they work, live, play, eat, and shop. So I think that is, is a full advantage. And the biggest advantage I see also, what are the biggest advantages I see also is, is WM Jordan has its own money, they are not city dollars. So we, we're not, we, we can't lose with this. We will benefit tax revenue from this as well. I would just like to encourage Mr. Lawson and his company to maybe consider a business incubator there so that you can teach other people to do what you do. We do not have a, a business incubator, as far as I know, in the city of Newport News and I think that would also be an asset. And also I, I always encourage you to be mindful of minority participation as you move forward in the project and I think it's a great project.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and voicing your opinion and giving us your comments about this project. As many of you know, I'm a lifelong resident of Newport News and I absolutely love this city. I remember the Oyster Point area when I was a child. There was no Target, there was no mall, it was a pasture, it was Yoder Dairy. And we have grown and I think for the good. This has been one of the toughest decisions that I've had to make as a city councilman and I wanted to do my due diligence and I wanted to reach out and get as much information as possible. And I will be the first to admit, we may not have done the best job prior to the planning commission of getting information out. But since then, I think we've come a long way, just in a couple weeks. You know, we've met with the developers, of course, and with city staff, but most importantly, we've met with the citizens, especially the citizens in Village Green that are being really directly impacted by this. And I, I just felt so, it was such a privilege to be able to come over to the Howard's home that one evening, I think, I believe it was last Monday, and to sit down with about a dozen residents and discuss this issue. And let me tell you, they were ready and they had a professional PowerPoint presentation and we sat down in the living room and we hashed things out and it took about an hour and a half. And at the end of that discussion, it came down to, we're not against the project, but we don't want this to negatively affect our quality of life here in Village Green or negatively affect anyone in the city of Newport News. And so many issues have come up and it's been a bunch of restless nights for me and thinking about, you know, I guess my number one concern coming on council was first do no harm and please leave the city better than you found it or than when you came on to council. After thinking about this long and hard, I am going to support this project. I think that many of the issues that the citizens brought up originally, talking about traffics, talking about stormwater, talking about the wetlands, have been addressed. Is it perfect? Probably not, but I'm sure Mr. Lawson realizes that there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of eyes on them, on this project. And that was one of the other things that I wanted to say made me feel comfortable, a little more comfortable about this project, was who was leading it up. And Mr. John Lawson has got a stellar reputation, not in, only in our community, but across this country and doing quality projects. And there was no reason for me to believe that he would take advantage of, number one, the citizens of our great city or anyone else that he's doing business with. So with that said, I'm going to support the project and hopefully this will be a great benefit to our city and hopefully improving the quality of life, not only for our residents that are here now, but hopefully to attract some younger residents to our great city and just to add on to what we already have. Thank you so much.
Tina.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to bring up the fact that one of the residents said that the road was, was flooding and VDOT is, it belongs to VDOT, the property belongs to VDOT. And I would hate to think that people are, have a misconception that it seems to me this should be taken care of now anyway, whether we do the project or not. That should not be connected to. So that is what I'm requesting of the council and city manager, that we look into this because I don't think people should have to live like this and, and then it's a misconception that connecting it with the project. I would urge us as a body, as the leadership of the city, to take care of this for the residents of Village Green.
Thank you, Tina.
Also, Mr. Mayor, if I may piggyback on the councilwoman, we should get our state legislators involved because they are under VDOT, VDOT is under them. So it is our state reps' responsibility to take care of that problem for you all also.
Yes.
I would just like to first commend the citizens and your demeanor tonight. This is a project that reasonable people can disagree upon, depending on your perspective. I think this city should be proud of the way it articulated its arguments, held to the time of the clock, and really surprised me in the way we got through this process. So I, as one who's leading this endeavor here, appreciate that very much. And, and again, I think hopefully that shows for those who will be coming to the city and, and joining this project as I count. Looks like that we're going to be successful in that and I just appreciate that on behalf of the staff. Yes.
I heard a lot tonight and I'm going to use the term of a guy that got killed, beat up in California and after he got well and he wasn't made with anybody, so he looked at his city and said, can't we all get along? And that's what we need to do. I, I feel that progress is what, is, if you don't have progress, you, you don't have anything. But like I said, you are in a spot where you're talking in terms, this is where you live, I live down here, and all of this need to be looked at and get, get something going on. We have business in, in downtown, I mean, in Southeast Community and we're going to make a, a good job at it and we're going to fix it up. It took, took a long time, it took a lot of fighting and this kind of stuff. So I'm telling you now that our city council and the people that are here tonight should get together, and I feel I'm already together, should get together and, and do the project, fix up the, the neighborhood. up the neighborhood, and get along with the neighborhood, and councils should get along with each other, so we can have a good city and have a good time. So I am in favor.
I'll vote for that.
I am, I am in favor.
I'll vote for that, Joe.
I'm in, I am in favor, we're going to have it. So let's have a good time, I'm for it.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry?
Against.
Motion carried five zero with one extension. And Vice Mayor Bateman? Thank you.
We're going to take a break at this point. Thank you. Okay, we're back from recess, and there's an ordinance, that's not really an ordinance, but I think on some of our information that we pass out to the citizens, that at 10 o'clock we would stop the meeting and have comments by citizens, matters germane to the business of council. Council tells me that we need to change the order by motion to do that, so if you wish to do that, I'd entertain a motion to go to that agenda item.
I'll move that change.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry?
Four.
Motion carried seven zero.
Any cards? Thank you. Antonio Thompson, I saw him leave, and Mike Minaric. Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Mike Minaric, 114 Limbrook Drive, City. This is something completely different to what you've been hearing tonight, but apparently, I don't know if you know it, but Gwynne Circle is closed. All right, and apparently I've come to speak in opposition to the proposed closing of Gwynne Circle through traffic. If you're not familiar with the area, it's a vital connection and gives area, folks in our area, access to more than one exit point from the community. I called the 311, and I say the reason was to return Lucas Creek to its natural state to reduce flooding in the area. I know there's a house down there, right next to Lucas Creek there, that in the 10 years, it's flooded three times. But this house is on the banks of Lucas Creek, okay? And Lucas Creek, as you may know, begins pretty much around Bland and Warwick Boulevard. And I know Bland is having problems, and I know they've done things to try to alleviate that problem, but that water now is coming down, further down Lucas Creek, and it flows under Gwynne Circle. And the problem there is, apparently, is that the pipes, or the conduit, or whatever you call that, under the road are not adequate to handle the flow. This appears to be a design problem that did not anticipate the additional runoff from developments in the Bland Boulevard relief efforts. Okay? Closing Gwynne Circle is just not an acceptable action. Fixing the flow problem is what needs to be do, done. I just thought perhaps putting a bridge, if they want to maintain a natural appearance of the creek there, putting a bridge there would be more of a natural state to replace the concrete culvert, if that couldn't be enlarged. I live on Limbrook Drive, and Gwynne Circle is my only direct access to Colony and Bland Boulevard that I use on a regular basis. So when they close Gwynne, I cannot access Colony or Bland Boulevard directly, because they go over to Nice Wood. In closing Gwynne Circle, we leave only one entrance and ingress to the community, and that's Tabs Lane. And we know that in previous conversations here, Tabs Lane has its own set of problems with the light on Warwick. This is troublesome from both a convenience and a safety viewpoint, especially dealing with emergency issues such as fire and ambulance apps access. There's two fire stations, one over Courthouse, and the other one is at Oyster Point. If we needed to get a fire, some apparatus from Oyster Point, they'd have to go the whole way back up around Tabs and do a circuitous route, wasting precious minutes, and we know in case of fire, minutes count very much. Also, the sign posted on the roadblock indicates that a 90-day study, or 60-day study, is in progress. What did the road need to be blocked, why did the road need to be blocked for a study? I have seen no traffic counts going on there, no engineers out there looking. What type of study is this? It appeared to me that the study is to find out how many citizens are upset with this closing. My question now is, how many do you need? I'll get the signatures, okay? This is not a deep creek pier. The city cannot ignore a stormwater problem by depriving its citizens of access to a vital connecting artery as it did to the pier. This is affecting too many lives and is irresponsible. Just ask it, fix the problem, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Skipper to address this issue?
I would suggest maybe you could, you could talk, talk with Mr. Minaric outside and work with him on this issue, if you would.
But, Mr. Manager, it doesn't only affect the Minarics, so the other people, the other people are not aware of why it is that way, and that's why I'm asking him to address it publicly.
That's why I call Skipper, he's skipping.
I'm calling for the sympathy vote. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Everett Skipper, I'm the city's Director of Engineering. And I do agree that there are issues with the potential closer of the roadway, which is why I asked that we conduct the study by actually closing the roadway. For a number of years, there have been significant complaints about the volume and behavior of cut-through traffic in this area. The last study showed that 95% of the residents on the affected roads were in favor of significant traffic calming measures that could potentially include closure. In addition, we did confer with the emergency services staff before we took this action, and they indicated to us that they believed that because of the position of the police and fire stations relative to the neighborhoods, that there were no significant differences in their ability to respond. Accordingly, what we felt was that it made better sense to actually close the road on a temporary basis, conduct the study, and make a determination as to what would be best with the input of the manager and/or yourselves when the study was complete. I apologize, you should have received in last week's council package a memorandum. Unfortunately, I was in hospital, and when I returned to discover that we had missed a deadline, so I do apologize to council, you should have been aware of this by memorandum last week, and that that was my doing.
I just ask you, why you can't do the study without closing it?
Unfortunately, Councilwoman, the difficulty is that if we post signs, if we ask for the discussion, no one tells us. And then when we actually take the action, suddenly we discover all of the problems. In this particular case, there was a judgment call to be made as to whether it could be fair, and in all frankness, the preponderance of the traffic engineering evidence would suggest that it should be closed, not merely because of the storm drainage, but also because of the traffic calming questions. I was very reluctant to do that without further study. And so again, I made the determination that it would make better sense to temporarily close the road and conduct the study, so that we could actually see what happened with response times, and those who were actually impacted would be able to say to us, you made me take an extra half hour because I had to go around, or this actually worked for me.
So, does he need to get signatures?
If any resident would like to provide input, in whatever form they would like to provide the input, we're happy to hear it. We have asked, based on the letters that we sent to the residents and also the signage that's out there, we've asked folks to call the city's 311. They do have a running tally of all the calls that are made, and they're indicating for and against, and the reasons to us. As of today, they did tell us that they were running about 50/50. I don't recall the number of calls that they had actually received, but they did specifically tell us it was about 50/50, based on what they've heard so far.
Mr. Skipper, how did you articulate this situation to the constituents to let them know that this was pending and that it was temporary up to this point? I mean, Minaric is shaking his head, and you know that the citizens in Denby, they're very concerned about what goes on around them, especially if they do not have information, and that's why I always have these open meetings, and I wasn't aware of this, because we would have discussed it at the town hall meeting a couple months ago, which I'm sure our new manager will have, you know, he will get broken in correctly, you know, next week, because he's going to be at the next town hall meeting. So I just, I'm just concerned that, you know, they didn't get the message, and that's why they are having to come here to complain to us tonight.
Yes, ma'am, it may be possible that some were missed in some fashion. What we did do was we posted flashing message boards for the last two weeks. In addition, we had also sent to, we draw within the GIS map a picture that surrounds the area, it gives us every single address in that area, and we sent letters, again, the exact number escapes me, but we did send letters to everyone that we felt was reasonably likely to be affected.
Okay, where did you put the message boards? Where at? Which streets?
I don't know, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
May I finish now? Okay, I didn't get the message, I didn't get a letter, I didn't see a message board, okay? The first time we saw it, we happened to come on, we were on vacation last week, and we see this big barriers on Gwynne Circle with a big sign telling us that it's closure. We thought perhaps they were going to fix the run-through on that. In addition to that, there's, prior to getting to Gwynne Circle, there's signs saying Gwynne Circle is closed through traffic further up, with no explanation as to why it's closed, so people turn around, delivery trucks turn around, going all different ways, and people standing there just fussing and cussing. I live within, I guess, five houses of Gwynne Circle on Limbrook Drive, so that's what I say, we go that way. And in a previous attempt, engineering, and they put, tried to put a traffic circle right in Gwynne Circle. You may recall that fiasco. They put the bags down, so making it like one of these circles, supposedly to slow traffic. I don't know why they don't use speed bumps, I mean, it's commonly used other places if they want to slow traffic. But, you know, I just didn't have a whole lot of positive feelings for engineering when they put that thing in there, so they decided against that. But again, it just popped up one day without any notice, and there we are, we had to deal with it, okay? But I would just say that we have a problem with drainage, I know the people there, I have never, I have not talked to anybody that was concerned about traffic throughput, yes, because it is such a vital connection from that area, through Bland, and even to go to Colony, which is, you know, we've been using it since we've been here, okay?
Okay, we're on it.
You got it?
Yes, thank you.
Those are all the cards I have for the, this section, so we will now go back to item E3. E3 is a request to adopt, and this is page 155. E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit CU 13-314 to Brenda L. Atkins to operate a group home for five persons on property located at 820 Greenwich Lane and Zone R4, single-family dwelling. Link of Hampton Roads Incorporated is leasing the residence to use as a group home for military veterans, and will provide supervised short-term housing for this specific population. Link of Hampton Roads operates and manages the home in partnership with the Hampton Veterans Affairs Medical Center. The group home is consistent with the Framework for the Future 2030 Comprehensive Plan recommendations. On July 17, 2013, the Planning Commission voted 701 to recommend approval of the request with conditions. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards? Ooh. Nancy Butterfield. And before we start, there are several cards here, and we've already had a lengthy discussion. If someone is speaking for a group, and you would like to just chime in and not use your time, that would be greatly appreciated if the person is stating what you wish to state. That way we can show us hands for those who agree with the speaker. Thank you. I'm Mr. Butterfield.
Could Joyce O'Brien speak first?
I'm sorry?
Could Joyce O'Brien speak first? She's the House Manager.
Joyce O'Brien, sure. Joyce O'Brien? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Joyce O'Brien, I'm a Newport News resident.
A little closer to the mic.
Thank you. I live at 129 Creekshire Crescent in Newport News. I am the program director for the Transitional Housing Program, and as you stated, it's a partnership with Link and the Hampton VAMC. At a previous meeting, there were concerns expressed about the veterans living in the home and neighborhood safety, and I wanted to address some of those issues, if I may. The veterans are carefully screened by the VA staff before they are placed in the home. Their motivation to complete their goals and their health status are two of the criteria that are assessed. The veterans need to be goal-focused for activities such as saving their money, attending their appointments, respect for themselves and for their, for their housemates and their environment. They need to be ambulatory, no one in the house is wheelchair-bound. The house is a tri-level house, so they need to be able to go up and down stairs. Their medical issues need to be under control with medication or therapy. PTSD, as we all know, is common among veterans, and those veterans who are diagnosed with PTSD are on medication and are being treated by psychiatrists and psychologists at the medical center. No alcohol or drug use is allowed in the home or while they're participating in the program. They are tested for alcohol and drugs very frequently when they're out on a pass. The first thing that happens when they come in the door is they're given a breathalyzer and they're drug-tested. We also do random testing. When they're out for a full day, the first thing happens is they're, they're breathalyzed when they come in. In addition, they have to attend AA and NA meetings if they have a history of drug and alcohol abuse. There's a House Manager on site. We must always, and part of our contract with the VA is that if there is one veteran in the house, there has to be a professional there from Link, and so we follow that religiously. We transport them daily from the home down to the VA, so they can attend their meetings, their appointments, their program, and we also provide bus passes for them. There was a comment made that the veterans were roaming the neighborhood, that is something that they don't do. Generally, they are in the house, they are relaxing, watching TV, or they're out on the back deck smoking. The only time that they may be walking in the neighborhood is from the bus stop to the house, but as I said, generally, they're transported in our van. They have to adhere to the guidelines of the house, and if they do not follow the guidelines, they are removed from the house. And we are very careful to make sure that they do, that they are aware of the guidelines and that they do follow them, and it's not often that a veteran is removed for non-compliance. Prior to veterans entering the house on Greenwich, the house was inspected by an interdisciplinary team from the VA to assure that the house was safe and secure. Until all standards were met, no veteran was allowed to live there. And they periodically come back and inspect the house. They also scrutinize the program to make sure that we are providing the care that we're supposed to be giving them. They're very intent on making sure that each of the veterans and the house, and also the neighborhood is safe and secure. At the beginning of this process of the permit, a police officer visited the house and recommended that a camera system be installed to monitor the outside of the house, and we are completing that recommendation now. This program is a win-win, not only for the veterans, but also... a win-win, not only for the veterans, but also for the community. Once the veterans complete the program, they are stronger, they're ready to get a job, get their own housing, and become productive members of the community of their choice. Most of them do stay in this area, but there are some of them that return to other parts of the state or the country where their families are.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, yes, and you kind of alluded to at the end of your statement there, where do the veterans come from that participate in this program? Are they just from the peninsula? Or where do you find, you know, the veterans for this program?
They are participating in the program at the VA. And so they recommend and refer them to us.
So they could be...
They could come from all over the country, but at this particular time, they're in this area.
Gotcha.
So what's the age range?
Are they younger people, older people?
They're, they're more mid-aged, although lately, we've gotten a few younger, a few younger ones. But I would say the age range is about 40, 50 years old, somewhere in that area.
And there's currently three residents at this home now?
Yes.
And there's a manager there now?
Yes.
That, and there's 24 hours a day?
Yes.
So do you have other facilities already in Newport News that you're doing the same thing for the veterans?
We have one other one, yes.
Has there been any problems at the other one?
Not at all. The, the folks in that neighborhood have really embraced the program and the veterans. And we have no problems. In fact, since that prior meeting, some of the folks in the neighborhood of Greenwich have also come forward and they're, they're baked brownies for the veterans. And, you know, they just become very friendly.
Thank you.
And how many people are in the other house?
Three.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Nancy Butterfield.
Okay, I'm Nancy Butterfield. And I'm on the Board of Directors with Link. I was raised in the Army, and my dad served 28 years. He was in Korea. My husband served 20 years and was in Vietnam twice. So the veterans are real dear to my heart. I've seen what happens a lot of times to the guys that come out and have problems from being in the war and that sort of thing. Our guys are veterans who are assisted with reconnecting with their families. And medical programs at the VA are in our house to learn skills of being a civilian after serving our country as military people. Our program is 24/7 and is covered by house managers overseen by Joyce O'Brien that just spoke. And members of the VA medical staff visit the house regularly to check on the guys and look at their cases, see how they're doing. We help them get on their feet, help them to find housing, to access financial resources through jobs in their community and their military benefits. They do volunteer in the community. The goal is to give these veterans a safe, secure place to live and the tools to make them productive citizens. They have never caused trouble in the neighborhood. They keep to themselves while in the home. We've never had any problems with them. They're good guys that have served their country. And we ask that they not have to be moved. Thank you.
Thank you. James Greer.
James Greer, I'm with him.
Green.
And if there's a time for you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay. Good evening. My name is James Green, and I'm on the Board of Directors, and I'm also a veteran. And I'm strongly in favor of the Greenwich House and houses like that because I too have been in those shoes where I needed help and no place to go. So I've been helped. And now I've gone from being a liability to an asset to this city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Beau Williams.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Beau Williams, and I'm at 821 Greenwich, Greenwich, live right across the street. And I certainly appreciate our veterans. My father-in-law is retired Air Force. My father also served. My grandfather is a World War II veteran. And I certainly am in favor of anything that would help our veterans, especially for their sacrifices that they've given to us. And so, but along with that, we do know that these guys, along with that, they've gone through some hard things, unfortunately. And, but at the same time, I do have four small children right across the street. There are concerns. Have they given us any trouble right across the street? They have not. Have they, have I ever felt threatened? No, I have not. If one forgets their medicine, I feel like I'm the first one in danger, though. And so I'm not really 100% sure saying, I'm against this and I don't want these guys there. So I don't want that to be upon me. But I do have concerns. Some have voiced concerns about property values dropping. I'm not concerned about that. Some have concern, concerned about, it's a business, it's a for-profit business across the street. I'm not concerned about that. There are the, there are the safety issues. I have not seen these guys roaming the neighborhood. I've never felt in danger of that. But obviously, there are concerns having those four, our four small children right across the street. I am, four programs like this, is a neighborhood the right place for that? That's my question. And, and that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Patterson.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thanks for having me up here. Well, prior to hearing what was just said about the program, I'm sorry, I live on 917 Chatsworth Drive. So I'm in the same neighborhood as the Greenwich House. I was led under the impression that it was going to be a halfway house for rehabilitated criminals. So I'm kind of at a loss right now. I'm pretty embarrassed.
Oh, no.
But I do want to say that there was an individual in my neighborhood who decided to remain anonymous about, and felt concerned about the, about the house being in the neighborhood. And had left a flyer on my door, and I just caught back in from out of town. And I was led to believe that this was a halfway house for prior criminals. I'm a military veteran. I've served my country for 15 years now. I'm a reservist. I did 10 years active duty. I did three tours overseas, two in Iraq, one in Kuwait. And I can't imagine telling military vets, no, that you can't come into my neighborhood. I, I, I would be ashamed if I said to any of my military veteran brothers that they could not come and rehabilitate and get themselves back on their feet. Counsel, I, I'm, I must, I got to apologize for how I came to this, but now I feel very strongly that this should be allowed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Samuel Lucky. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Samuel Lucky. My address is 239...
Did you bring the mic up? Thank you.
My address is 239 U-Bank Circle, which is, my front yard looks directly into their back porch with only one house in between us. When I first heard of what this house coming into the neighborhood, I did have concerns. I have a special needs child, six years old. I have a wife who's partially handicapped. I had some concerns. Instead of being scared, I went to the gentleman who, the house manager, and asked him, what's going on? What are you doing here? He told me basically what this lady had said, that, you know, they're very scrutinized. They've done a lot. I see him out there mowing the yard three times a week sometimes. Their place is immaculate. It's probably one of the best-looking places in the general area. After speaking with this gentleman, and this was, I imagine, they probably initially moved in a little bit earlier than, than these hearings, this, a few months ago, actually, and never had a problem with any of them. Not concerned with the safety at all. I'm more concerned with criminals who walk through the street and sell drugs in the park behind us. That's where my safety concerns are. It's not with those guys. Never had a problem. One of the things that struck me the most was, I asked, you know, I never see you guys out, never see you guys out. One time, one of the gentlemen were out barbecuing, made a ham or something, brought a ham bone over to my neighbor for his dog. That was the only time we've had any, any, anything with them. And I asked that question, what's going on? He said, basically, we don't even allow these guys to have any connection with anyone in the neighborhood because we don't want any problems. We want to make sure everything is totally safe. You know, my children, who were very talkative and very friendly, wanted to go over and talk to the guys. No, we can't do that. They can say very politely, you know, I'm not going to talk to you. I need to go inside right now. They don't sit and talk with you, not even our children. Perfectly safe. That's why I wouldn't want anything to be handled for anyone that I may not know. I think these guys are more scrutinized, and we know more about them than anyone else in the neighborhood. We don't know who lives next door to us unless you make the effort to really know them. Who knows what they are? I mean, who knows what the guy is? And in Cleveland was a great example. They didn't know what was going on to them for years right next door. They didn't know. These guys are much more scrutinized. I totally support these guys. Totally feel safe with them. Don't see any reason why they shouldn't be walking into the neighborhood. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jason Clem.
My name is Jason Clem. I live at 237 U-Bank Circle. My front yard meets up with their backyard. And as Mr. Lucky said, I have not had any problems with these gentlemen whatsoever. I've served seven years active duty in the Air Force, and I'm currently serving, I've served four years, and the Air National Guard is still going to continue. I have no problem with veterans whatsoever coming into my neighborhood and being rehabilitated, especially when they've got the background checks, the drug, you know, getting drug-tested. These people have served our country. You know, they've done their time, whether it be for two years or for 30. They took time out of their lives and give it to our country. I think it's time that our community comes together and welcomes them instead of walking around slandering them. You know, saying that these guys are selling food stamps. If you don't have proof of anything that you're saying, you shouldn't be saying it. And these guys are walking around putting, well, I can't say guys, individuals have walked around and trying to get me signed, letters, or whatever, what have you, petitions. Individual put a letter in my door, trying to get me to go their way as far as being against us. And I'm not. I'm fully for it. And I think it's a shame that the community can't come together. Because if they can't live in our neighborhood, why is it okay for them to live somewhere else? Where are they supposed to go? I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sue Christie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is...
Can you bring the mic down? Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sue Christie. I live at 824 Greenwich Lane. I live right next door to the home that's in question. I know the homeowner. I've known her for years. She would never rent her home to a group that wasn't legit. I love the fact that they do the background checks. As far as the safety of children, I fear more for the people who go in and out of that park than the one lives next door to me. I have an 18-year-old daughter who has Down Syndrome. Her safety is very important to me. Her, her highlight of her life is to swing and sing in our backyard. The men that live there, they smoke outside because they're not allowed to smoke in their home, which is a good thing because then I don't have to worry about a house being on fire next door. But with them sitting outside on their porch, that's an extra pair of eyes on my child that can protect her or haul her out. Because if I'm not out there, our dog is to watch her the few minutes when I may have to run in the house. But that's an extra person to help keep an eye on the children in case of distress. There have been other group homes in our neighborhood. I don't know why this one is a problem. As far as assessment of property, I don't know why the value would go down. They keep the yard more maintained. I have lent them my extension ladder for them to clean out their gutters. I feel no threat in them stealing it and not returning it. The one weekend, we were out doing yard work, and the group had someone, I don't know, associated with you, to plant flowers. I mean, come on now. They, they care about the property. They care about the people. My father was a World War II vet. My brother served in Vietnam. My other brothers have served in the military also. If it wasn't for the VA and their help for my dad, he wouldn't have been alive the seven years extra that he got to live because he had to have heart surgery. If these people have to come into the area to have surgeries and to maintain their health, why can we not help them and support them? These people have been heroes to our countries. In other places, they have been demons. I consider them heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I want them in the community.
Douglas Ray or Roy. Sorry. Thank you, sir. Mike Jones. Good evening, sir.
Hello, how you all doing today?
Good.
Mike Jones. I live at 929 Chatsworth Drive. That's in the neighborhood. Like most things, what's going on, I also serve my country. I'm a veteran. My wife, Sandra Jones, back there, she served her country. She's a veteran. My son now serving his country in Japan right now. And we both worked for the government. But like I said, as everyone was talking, this has struck us with surprise. And by my whole entire life, working for the government over 30 years, everything is happening, like, it happened, and then you'd be told later what's going on. That's the problem I had. I came to the meeting almost like blindsided because my wife called me. She said, we got this letter in the door, you know, what's going on? So you don't know what's going on in your neighborhood. You find out later, it be the already took place, you know? This is my first time ever coming to a council meeting. I thought it was great. My wife say, wow, this is pretty long. But I said, well, look at interesting it is. But however, but what I have, what I have seen, just to hear all the concerns that's going on in Newport News, and we have been in Newport News our whole entire life, basically. I'm born and bred in Mississippi, Virginia, came, met at Fort Eustis, got married, been married almost 30 years. Started at Fort Eustis and now back at Fort Eustis, a complete circle. Been all over, Korea, Germany, Hawaii, lot of bases in Virginia. Once we found out that this was a veteran home, it almost like, why are we here? But the reason why we here is because we wasn't told. The reason why we here is because we got a letter in our box. Things go on in neighborhood, things go on, but we don't know what's actually going on. The neighborhood is a great neighborhood. We've been living there for 16 years. I run the neighborhood all the time, you know, very peaceful neighborhood. However, I would just like to say that if we come together, like you say, as a whole, but we need to be knowing what's going on. Because it's almost like rumors. If rumors going on, you want to come and find out. I do not have a problem with veterans, like I say, because I'm a veteran. Most, my brothers are veterans and everything. But however, I do have a problem with finding out, you know, after the fact. It's almost say, let's do it, and then let's see how it happens. And for the last two councils that went on, it seemed like most of the time when we come here, the, you all mine, when I'm talking about the council... And for the last two councils that went on, it seemed like most of the time when we come here, the you all mine, when I'm talking about the council, you all, mine is already made up, how you all going to vote. The reason why I say that is because the rebuttal, and you all have done your research. So give us an opportunity to do our research. We don't, we didn't have an opportunity to do our research. Because right now, I'm just, basically just shooting from the hips on this conversation, because it's really bad to come up here, and you haven't done your research, and you're going to talk about a veteran, and you are a veteran. You know, you come to speak, you know, your wife a veteran, your son a veteran. Because if my son want to come back in the neighborhood, it's a revolving door. The same way he left, it's always open for him to come back. You know, so I would like to just say, one question that I would like to ask the council. I do not have a problem with veterans being our neighborhood, but would this right here open the door for other group homes to come into the neighborhood? So what if I want to open my house for, you know, criminals, sex offenders? I'm a sports director at Fort Eustis. I work around children every day. And right now, with the stuff that's going on, we do extremely background checks. Background checks is really, is one of the number one things that we do mostly now. How am I, can you all assure me that a sex offender neighborhood, a house went not opened up in my neighborhood? I'm going to get a question with you all, I want you all to think about that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Pat Knort. Is there a Pat out there who wants to? Corny Corn? Not here? Okay, thank you. Those are all the cards I have. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? On this topic? Glenda McMurtry?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, please, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Would you lower the mic a little?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I know it's been a long night, we're all tired. I'm tired, it's way past my bedtime. I have two small children, six and eight, and I, my name is Glenda McMurtry, and I live at 829 Greenwich Lane. I live on the street where the proposal to have the conditional permit be issued for Brenda Atkins at 820 Greenwich Lane. And I, to me, this is not about the veterans. When I got the letter from the City of Newport News, there was no mention of veterans. It said to operate a group home, and that's all it said. I had to call the Planning Commission to get additional information, and when I did, that's when they told me it was for veterans. So to me, this is really not about veterans. This is about the conditional permit to operate a group home, which happens to be for veterans, which I found out after I called. This neighborhood is a residential neighborhood for single-family dwellings, and it should remain that way. I, I'm a homeowner, I purchased my home, and I have a family, and I purchased it in the neighborhood that my husband lived in and grew up in for families, not for group homes. And again, it has, to me, it's not anything to do with the veterans. I'm not against the veterans. But this is a residential neighborhood for families, and I feel it should remain that way. And I feel that if you do approve this, you'll be setting precedents, and I think others will be allowed to come in and establish group homes of other natures, maybe not for veterans. And at the Planning Commission meeting, I watched on television, I wasn't able to be there in person. I know Ms. Finding was there from the Link Agency, but the conditional use permit has to be, the person that has to actually give you the permit to apply for the permit is the homeowner. The homeowner is not here, is she? She doesn't live in our neighborhood any longer. She doesn't, she's not vested in the neighborhood. She doesn't live in the neighborhood. She's not assimilated in the neighborhood any longer. So she, this is a means for her to earn some type of financial income to support her home or herself, whatever the reasons. I don't think it's because she wants to help the veterans, although that is a collateral benefit for her. And I just feel that it's a residential neighborhood, it should remain that way. I purchased my house in this neighborhood. I'm vested in the neighborhood. My family's vested in the neighborhood. We care about the neighborhood. Our children go to school in the neighborhood. The veterans that will be in the house, or the members of the household, my understanding, when I called the Planning Commission, they can live there from as little as one week up to six months. So you're not going to have those same five people in that house. It's going to constantly change. So yes, maybe they're nice and they talk to you now, but you don't know what you're going to get in a week, two weeks, six months from now. And that is my concern. And I want it to remain a single-family dwelling neighborhood, because that's what it was established to be. And that's what it should be. And that's what I purchased, and I want it to remain that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, let's, for example, if this does not go through, they could still maintain three residents in that home now?
Right. And three residents is better than five. And I also understand, Ms. Finding made a comment at the end of the commission hearing, that, oh, I can put a homeless family in there with all kinds of issues, and they won't like that either. Well, I'd rather have a family in there that will be there permanently and be committed to the neighborhood, and that will assimilate to the neighborhood, and that I will see in the stores, I will see in the schools, and I can get to know them. I won't know these five strangers, five men, coming in and out from one week to six months at a time. And thank you. Is there any other questions I can entertain?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any more cards? Was it, was this? I'm going to approach that. Was there someone else that wanted to speak that we don't have your cards?
Again, good evening. I am very tired, as well as everybody else. My name is Elaine Brayboy, and I am coming in on behalf of my neighborhood, in which we were told that, after receiving the letter from the City of Newport News, that they would be operating a group home. I am now a widow, and I'm not happy that I see young, the men that I have seen. I'm not opposing what I've seen, but I am not happy that the men would be transit. I've been in my home thirty years, and I come in in the evening hours, or I can come in in the day. I have seen the young men in going into their homes. I mean, they're going into that dwelling. Again, I would like for you all to consider that being a single-family dwelling home. Because of the fact that it is going to be veterans, and they would be transit in moving, in coming in and going out. There will be medical conditions also, that could possibly be post-traumatic stress. I, I'm just a little bit opposed to, I'm not opposed to the veterans, don't get me wrong, but I am opposed to having my neighborhood with a group home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, come on.
My name is Douglas Ray. I live at 827 Greenwich Lane, just down the street from 820. And I was at the planning meeting, and I heard a lot of people talking about veterans with post-traumatic stress syndrome, et cetera. And that was never one of my main concerns. I'm currently serving in the military, in spite of the beard, since I'm currently between duty stations, so, but I will continue living where I am now. And in the end, veterans are people too. And yes, they need a place to stay, they need a place to perform their recovery. However, whenever I moved into my house, one of the first things I did was I talked to some of the neighbors and asked them, what is the neighborhood like? How family oriented is it? See, who lives around here? So I looked in the backyard, saw my neighbors had a swing set, say, saw another neighbor who runs a daycare out of her house, and thought, this is going to be a good family-oriented place to live. And with the group home coming in, and, don't get me wrong, I appreciate everything Link does for veterans. I think they're a great organization. I don't think that this is a neighborhood for a group home. Similar to running a short-term hotel, or a long-term hotel. People coming in and going out. I understand that they have a lot of restrictions placed on when the guys can come and go, who they can talk to, and what those restrictions do is serves to prevent those people from getting to know the community. I spoke with the representative from Link, I believe it was you, may have been another lady, I'm sorry, at the city planning meeting, and she also discussed the possibility of putting a family in there. And I said, yes, I would much prefer that, because then I can get to know them. And she said they will take that into consideration. So it's my recommendation that we let these guys that are currently there finish their stay. There's no point in relocating them. They haven't proven to be any problem whatsoever that I know of. And then move a single family into it, so that we can get to know them, invite them into the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that? Yes, sir.
I'm Kurt Hazel. I live at 828 Chatsworth Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I just want to say that I'm a veteran myself. Our community is composed, I'd say approximately seventy-five percent of the people who live in our community are veterans. I would say the majority of them are against this group home. Number one, we're in our four-zone community that's residential. We want to keep it that way. This group home is not owned by an individual that lives in, was not, has not been proposed to zoning or council from an individual that lives in our community. It's part of a corporate structure. Being our four-zone, we, according to when I moved in, the covenant said no businesses. There's not any businesses, other than one daycare center that I can think of in our community. That's A. B is the fact I'd like to see it stay a residential community. That's what I bought my home for. I live by the rules. Codes comes in. I'd say ninety-four percent of our homes are presentable. That's from structures to the laws. We want to keep it that way. We have a park in the community, it's fairly safe for the residents of the community. You can't restrict adult people. It sounds good. We'll have eight-hour observance of people, we'll have this. Try restricting adult who's a veteran. It doesn't happen. You see, and these are the reasons that I don't want to see it in our community. There's other locations. I don't know of many, but I would like to keep our community residential. And our families are safe, we know each other. Five adult men cannot get along together. In fact, we see it within our own homes. If we get a family in the house, at least it's a child going to school. At least it's a man and wife who might join our association. Please consider in a unanimous way to vote this down. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Those are all the cards and/or hands that I have seen to speak on this issue. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Bateman? Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move.
Moved, moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Tina?
Yes, several things I have. The first thing I received, I do want to thank all of you for coming out to speak tonight, but during the course of the, since it had gone to the Planning Commission, and they had approved it, I did receive several calls and letters. And I am in agreement with Ms. Glenda and some, Ms. Bray Bradley, that if, Brayboy, I'm sorry, if it is a single-family community, a single-family neighborhood, I am proposing that we do keep it that way. I think that's what happened to downtown Newport News, with a lot of the neighborhoods, the streets, we allowed anything to happen to the single-family homes, and then it turned into, you know, what we have now, where we are struggling trying to get it, get, make some sense out of it. I'm not opposed of any veterans, but I do think that, of course, according to our laws, that three unrelated people can stay on a property, so that's allowed. But I think to put a group home with five people into a single-family neighborhood, of course, people did not choose their homes based on that. They bought it, purchased, based on having a neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood. And what I really would like to propose, because I'm of the opinion that our veterans, they have fought for our country, they protected our borders, but I think a room can be very temporary, but I think we should look for the future, and to broaden our base, looking at a more comprehensive plan, and working to help renovate our Whitaker Heritage Veterans Development on Twenty-Eighth and Orchid, and have it so the veterans can have an apartment, which would be more conducive to their livelihood, and improve their quality of life with the onsite service, onsite services. I really do think we should not just piecemeal this. If we really want to work with veterans, we need to have a comprehensive plan as to what we're going to do, and not just transit people in and out of neighborhoods. So I would like to ask the city manager if we could possibly meet, and I can, since you're new, to talk about the Whitaker Heritage, and provide more of a quality of life for our veterans. So I will not be supporting this tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm understanding also that they can come there by right, up to three people. I mean, they don't have to come past the city for that. I understand you all's position, your plight and everything, but I would feel like a hypocrite. My uncle served in World War II, World War I. My son is a veteran. My, I have three nephews now. They have fought in every war, Bangladesh, Kuwait, they've fought in every war. They have sixteen, nineteen, and twenty-two years respectively. And I would feel like a hypocrite if they came to move in a neighborhood, and somebody said, you can't stay in this neighborhood, and they have served and protected this country. So I have no choice, I have to vote for it. I don't see them as a detriment to the community, even though I do understand your trepidation, but I just don't see that they are a detriment to the community. I really don't. So I'm going to have to support it.
Any further to say?
I feel as if I can't really, I don't know, from listening to you all, I started gravitating towards the first speakers. I felt like it was clear-cut that I should vote for this. And I'm respectful of Link and what they do, and how well they manage the properties, and what they're doing for the veterans. And I don't claim to have some particular claim to virtue or knowledge of knowing that I'm right on this one, but I'm respectful of the neighbors who invested long-term, thinking they were investing in a single-family neighborhood home. That's compelling to me. And I really don't feel very comfortable voting against this, but I'm going to. I really feel like Tina, Mrs. Vick, when she was speaking, talking about comprehensive plans, I don't know that the Whitaker solution, it sounds like it might be one, but I don't know that we have a long-term plan for housing for veterans in Newport News, that we all know what it is or understand. I'm compelled that we probably should. I think it's a dynamic that we should be interested in, given the fact that this is a military community. But for the interest of the homeowners who have invested money, and they're probably their largest investment in a long-term asset, I'm respectful of that. I don't know that this vote that I make now is going to really solve any problems at all. And it's with great trepidation that I don't support it. And it's with great trepidation that I don't support it. And thank you for your time.
I'd just like to say, I really feel that most group homes that I have had experience with are better neighbors. And, and I've had experience with them because the population I worked with when I taught at Hampton University were special needs and many of our special, we have now the Community Services Board in my community has a group home, has two group homes right together off of, very near my home, and another one in the adjacent neighborhood of Hydenwood. And most of the neighbors don't even know that they're special needs. They are so well-behaved and so well-accepted and are, turn out to be wonderful, wonderful neighbors. I, I have the greatest respect for what you're saying, and I know Kurt very well, but my experience with the Community Services Board with, with group homes for people who are mentally challenged or emotionally challenged, the kind of supervision and screening that they get assures the neighborhood of a much better neighbor than a lot of my neighbors. So I am going to support it. I just really feel that it's, I, I can't do that to the veterans and I can't do it to special needs people. They're human like we are. And most of them are better behaved than many of us, so.
But I do want to add too that in the, the same process that we talked about for the other project, the rezoning, we do need to have some process because I do understand coming here not knowing what you're really coming for because I guess, Link, you all did not talk to the people in the community to let them know what the rezoning was all about. So I think you do owe citizens some type of, of respect and order, some type of order to at least help them understand what's happening. Because for them to come here, like the gentleman said, we've already gotten, have, we already have our mind made up, but you all are coming here not knowing. So I, I hope that you all, you know, can do a better job in to educating the community about what, what is coming because we may not have had as much dialogue if they did understand.
Yes.
Really quick, I want to say that I agree with Councilwoman Woodbury on this matter. Our veterans have sacrificed. They have protected our country. I was a little disturbed by some of the comments I read from the planning commission about the way some, some people were characterizing the veterans. And then to hear tonight that somebody passed a flyer around saying that it was going to be a home full of criminals and ex-offenders was a little disturbing. So I agree that the, the regulations are good, that the, there's no alcohol, there's no drugs, that they are supervised 24 hours a day. We've heard testimony from quite a few neighbors saying that they are good neighbors, that they maintain their properties, and that they are not out roaming the streets and being a threat to what appears to be anyone. And from what I hear, they've been, they're at the home since February 2013 and not one call for service to that home. So for those reasons, I'm going to go ahead and support the, the measure.
I have, unlike one of the speakers who said that we come with our minds made up, I did not have my mind made up on this issue and was waiting to, to hear the testimony. I, I agree with you. I think Link, who, who I admire, possibly could have done a better job of communication of, of the use of the facility. Unfortunately, the way our medical system is in this country, we're going to see a lot more of this. And with the number of veterans that are going to be returning to this area, I think all neighborhoods are going to have to step up and take their fair share. And what I've heard, what has swayed me, I think more so are the immediate neighbors who feel very comfortable with this. And I'm going to support this, and there's no way that I, that I could vote, being that I also have served this country, even though a short period, could vote against this. So unless there's some other comment, I'm going to ask that we have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Against.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Against.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carried, five two.
Thank you. Page 189, item E4, is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CU 13-315, to allow for the operation of an outdoor composting facility on a portion of the old Denby landfill site at 15194 Ward Boulevard and zone M2 heavy industrial. The conditional use permit allows a recent rezoning of this property from P1 Park to M2 heavy industrial. The conditional use permit will allow the recycling center's current compost and household waste operations, as well as a future indoor composting operation for which a feasibility study is now underway. The existing and proposed uses are consistent with the framework of the future 2030 Comprehensive Plan and the Stony Run Park Master Plan. On July 17, 2013, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend approval of the outdoor composting operation and defer action on the indoor composting operation until the feasibility study is complete. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards? Thank you. Joe Lemming. Good morning, I mean, good evening, sir. Welcome.
I didn't come down with the intention of talking about being a veteran, but I'm a veteran.
Yes.
A veteran's veteran, and I think nothing's too good for a veteran. I got some potholes I want to talk to you about.
Okay.
But in the meantime, let me save us five minutes if I can. Table this. Don't vote on it. Table this. And let's have a good, hard look at the position paper you just read from. My contention is this is just about fifty percent bogus. And I don't want to spend five minutes arguing it, but I'll come back later or over coffee somewhere, and I'll tell you why I feel that this is sloppy staff work. And I, I, I have not had the pleasure of meeting the new city manager, but I don't think that's his approval down there, not in sixteen days. He couldn't possibly look through the Framework for the Future and the Stony Run Park Master Plan and do all the things he's had to do. I think that he needs to take a good, hard look. And in fact, if I was on council right now, I'd put up the money for him to rent himself an airplane or a helicopter and get up above Newport News and have a good, hard look at the city. And not just driving around, it'll take him forever if he drives around. It'll be time-saving to let him fly over the landfill. Look at that landfill. Look where it sits. Look what its neighbors are. And imagine an explosive device that gets 250 tons of garbage to operate efficiently and provide the city with 100,000 tons or gallons, whatever the gas is. Did I mention the fact I was on vacation recently, staying in a motel that provided me, was free newspapers? And on July the 30th, I picked it up, opened it up, and said, good heavens, in my home state of Kansas, one of these outfits that turned waste into, into, oh, energy, excuse me, waste to energy, okay, in my home state of Kansas, it caught fire and exploded. Took forty firemen from the Air Force Base and three or four cities around there, and they spent all night and all day trying to keep the big tanks from blowing. The other thing you'll find about these outfits is when you go to the web and you crank in these, the verbiage, did you know that they've got the word hazards attached to them? And we're going to put that next to a school? We're going to put that next to, well, I said I wasn't going to talk like that. Table this thing, take another good, hard look at it because the way it's written, it would imply that we've been doing composting on there wrong all this time because the thing is zoned for a park. Shame on us as a city. We've been doing outdoor composting on parkland. Why, we better do something about that. That takes care of the first paragraph. Future indoor composting, that's the smudge pot I'm talking about. Show of hands, of course. How many remember the last time the city got involved in a waste-to-energy program? It was in the eighties. And the way we got that hundred acres that now is a landfill is because the irate citizens took a look at the details of that waste-to-energy plan and saw the same kind of stuff, same kind of stuff. You know, the only need that I can see for this whole project now that I'm cranked up and good? I read from the Quasar Energy Group's input to the city. Newport News would be the first municipality in the state to have an anaerobic digester of this type. Don't that make you feel good to know that we could be the first in the state to collect everybody's garbage? Because we don't even know what our needs are. At least with the other one, we knew we only needed 470 short tons worth of an incinerator, but we were going to build one that needed 670 to be efficient and 970 to make money, and we were going to truck trash from all over Virginia into Newport News. You like to work at Fort Houston, how you want to get in line with a garbage truck? Bringing stuff from Williamsburg, James City County? He said, oh, I'm through.
Thank you, sir.
Anyway, my suggestion was table this, honey, and come after it later, when, when the facts are a little more accurate. It's been fun. I'm sorry it took you so long. I do admire your patience.
I'm glad you didn't take your five minutes. Is, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move it up. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, point of, point of clarity, Mr. Mayor, am I to understand that the anaerobic digester is not included in this vote? We're not voting to do that.
That's correct.
It's already doing.
And we're not doing anaerobic digester.
No, they're still doing a feasibility study on that.
Well, that's what this is about, the feasibility study.
No, it's just about the conditional use permit.
Mr. Manager?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That's correct. The, the feasibility study is going on, and this is not part of the conditional use request. The feasibility study, until the feasibility study is done, that's not part of this. That's correct.
So what is this, then? Help me understand if this not, is not because you're talking about.
This is for the, this is for the outdoor composting facility at the recycling center.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Joe, I trust you, but I'm going to vote for this. Four.
Well, the law of unintended consequence.
Consent agenda. We are now on item F, which contains the following items. Page 213, minutes of the work session of July nine. Page 223, minutes of the regular meeting of July nine. A resolution and memorandum, memoriam for Mr. Howard Manley. Page 239, an ordinance amending the city code, chapter 31, pensions and retirement with various divisions. Do either of these need to be removed by any member of council? If not, thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't want to remove it. I want to add one sentence to the minutes of the last meeting, and it was about another parade that I was, and I had said something about it, but that's all.
Okay.
I can still vote on it.
Yes.
It's just one sentence.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It's been moved to a motion consent agenda, items F1 through 4, both inclusive. Did we get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item G, Mr. Manager. Mayor, council members, item G is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate modifications to the achievable dream middle-high school project financing plan. As some of you may recall, this was a new market tax credit program, which was very good in leveraging significant funding for the project. Seven years have, have been passed, and of the 20-year term, this would be to refinance the balance, in essence, saving a very significant amount of money, actually $650,000 over the life alone. So it's a success all the way around. So I'd recommend your approval. Are there any cards? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
At the advice of council, due to my affiliation with mine for Town Bank, I'm, I'm going to abstain.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero with one exception.
Item G2, Mr. Manager. Excuse me. I'm back to. I'm choosing a resolution authorizing city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase of wetlands mitigation credits from the Middle Peninsula Environmental Properties, Inc., as required to construct the Cannon Boulevard Sidewalks Project, excuse me.
Move it up.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Sorry, airplanes?
Yes. Wait a minute, we've got a card. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Alvin Keely Kelly. Good evening, sir, sorry.
Good evening, city council members. So, Councilman Coleman, I give you a special thanks for keeping this in the forefront. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity, an angel opportunity, a tradition in America to speak. I'm here concerning Campbell Road and Warwick Lawrence. Campbell Road.
Hold on one second, sir. This is not, this is not that agenda I had.
We'll, we'll return to that, sir. Okay? We have a second and a motion, and we're, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilman Whitaker?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item H, Mr. Manager. Mayor, council, of course, at 11:20, we now have 14 items of appropriations today.
We've already read them.
The good news is that most of them are great successes with staff getting grants. I can read them all if you'd like.
No.
No?
We've already read them. It's your chance.
No, it is. It's a good one.
All right. Number one is a court-appointed special advocate program for donation, $10,130. Number two is Human Services, Virginia Department of Social Services, 2014 Virginia Family Violence Prevention Grant for $25,260. Number three, Newport News Police Department, Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, School Revenue Officers, $50,000. Number four, Newport News Fire Department, Virginia Department of Fire Programs, this is the aid to localities, grant supplement of $80,632. Department of Engineering, number five, this is a VDOT federal and state grants for for construction improvement projects totaling $117,400. Number six, Newport News Fire Department, 2014 Virginia Department of Health Financial Assistance Programs, Grants $72,000 and Local Avenue $72,000 for a total of $144,000 appropriation. Number seven, Department of Engineering, another VDOT federal and state grants. of Health Financial Assistance Programs Grants seventy-two thousand and Local Avenue seventy-two thousand for a total of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars appropriation. Number seven, Department of Engineering, another V dot federal and state grants for construction of safety improvements for railroad crossing for Warwick Boulevard north of Fort Eustis Boulevard, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Number eight, Department of Juvenile Services, State Juvenile Services Department, two thousand and fourteen drug, juvenile drug treatment court, a program for a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Number nine, Newport News Drug, Adult Drug Court Program for two thousand and fourteen, a state grant of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Number ten, Department of Engineering, a two thousand and thirteen bond authorization storm drainage category for the construction of Groom Woods Road area drainage improvements, intersection and intersection improvements. This is the first phase of that, phase one B. A four hundred thousand dollars Department of Engineering, two thousand and thirteen bond authorization against storm drainage category, Bayberry subdivision drainage improvements, phase one project at a six hundred thousand dollars. Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Plan, fiscal year two thousand and thirteen public buildings. These are major renovations and repairs that total a million dollars. These are roofs and other improvements for the buildings. Thirteen, Department of Engineering, the federal bridge funding. Uh, this is the bond authorization. Uh, there's a one million four hundred and eighty-six thousand as well as the bridges category, two hundred thousand Washington, including Washington Avenue Bridge Superstructure Replacement Project, which is totaling one million six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And finally, fourteen, is a very significant success, and congratulate the fire department on this. It's the, a federal emergency FEMA Department of Homeland Security Grant for twenty-twelve staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, which is called a safer grant. And this totals one million seven hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, which will really be very significant supplement funding for our organization. So is that quick enough?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Any of these items need to be removed by any member of council? Moved as a block, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilman Whitaker.
Four.
Councilwoman Whitberry.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Okay, we're now at the item of new business. Mr. Manager.
In light of the hour, I would pass at this point.
Okay, city attorney. City clerk. Vice Mayor Bateman.
Mayor Price, I, I'm very pleased to take this opportunity to tell you I have nothing.
Okay, Councilman Coleman.
Uh, yes, and I'm not quite sure how to go about doing this, but, um, I had petition for reconsideration on the Campbell Road project from our last meeting, and it was agenda item H three, and I would like to give an opportunity for any residents from Warwick Lawns neighborhood to come up and give us their opinions and their comments about the project.
Okay. It's moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman.
Hold on, please. Yes, sir.
I think before there's any, before the roll is called on this, we should let members of the public come up and discuss it if they wish to, because if it doesn't get four votes to reconsider, it's done.
Okay. So we hear the public hearing before the vote?
Yes, I mean, right now you have a, a motion and a second to reconsider. If the vote to reconsider is taken and it doesn't obtain four votes, then it's done and there's nothing for them to talk about. So if you want to let them speak, now would be the time.
Okay. Sir. Mr. Kelly. You're on.
Jim Crow gave birth to Warwick Lawns. In the late forties, early fifties, there was no suitable adequate living arrangement for blacks, for black citizens in the city of Newport News, much less for the black military families that were stationed in Newport News and the surrounding areas. There were two black individuals who conceived of a plan for Warwick Lawns. They were Mr. Tellison and a Mr. Crutchfield. They got together and devised a plan, had the plan drawn up, and ran into complications with city officials. So one of the individuals, a Mr. Crutchfield, got frustrated, and a white man by the name of Mr. Lippman came in and soothed out all the problems. Some of the problems were permits being delayed, outlandish codes and whatnot. But when Mr. Lippman came in, all the problems were resolved, and Warwick Lawns came about. Forty-seven years ago, two individuals from the area, Dr. Franklin and, uh, who's deceased, and, uh, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Boykins, who owns and operates, and owns and operates and is still alive, operates, uh, BMW cleaners. They stood, they stood before the city officials, as I am doing today, pleading, petitioning, demanding the same things that I'm standing before you to get accomplished, and that is construction of Campbell Road. All of a sudden, as the sky blew, poof, Campbell Road comes into, uh, into focus. And I'm wondering, did Jim Crow turn his back? And, or did the city hear, did the city finally hear our plea? Or was it, or is it because of Amtrak coming to the area? Our own engineering department advised city council that Campbell Road should be widened, gutters put on both sides, a sidewalk, and the remaining ditch to be covered. But for some reason, city council refuses to take the advice of its own people. The engineering, the engineering department gave some pertinent reasons why there should be some improvements on Campbell Road. In the span of two years, there was fifty accidents, fifty vehicle, vehicle accidents, forty-seven injuries, two hundred thousand dollars in property damage. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm talking about a span of road that's less than a mile, and the speed limit is only twenty-five miles an hour. Ninety-five thousand dollars was spent on a design for Campbell Road, and for some reason, city council is still not taking the advice of its own people. The ninety-five thousand dollar design was awarded to the same engineering firm that is doing the engineering for the relocation of the Amtrak station. Their design echoes what our own, what, what our own city department recommends. If it is in fact to be a transportation system, transportation center, and it is gonna be a transportation center, shouldn't it reflect the city of Newport News? For example, the Christopher Newport University area. Okay, I might, I might be overstepping my bounds, but what about the excellent job that the city of Newport News did with the Rich Neck Road or even the Deep Creek Road?
Mr. Kelly, I'm sorry your time is, uh...
With respect to, uh, with our respect, I say to the city council, um, we don't, we don't, we don't want to accept what you are proposing to do.
Thank you, thank you. Ruth Ann Williams. Good evening, ma'am, welcome.
Good morning.
Close.
I guess I've got somewhat of a rhetorical question. General Mo was up here earlier, uh, speaking about the consolidation of Warwick and Newport News on July one, nineteen fifty-eight. At that consolidation, Newport News became responsible for the infrastructure in the consolidated cities. Okay? They kinda picked and chose what they were gonna do. This gentleman had mentioned, uh, Oyster Point or whatever becoming the, uh, main area of the city, uh, during this consolidation. And it's aw, you know, it's awfully strange to me is everything that has gone on over there at the same time in nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine, residents in Warwick Lawns was trying to get Campbell Lane, Campbell Road upgraded from a substandard to a standard road. Today, right now, at this minute, both of them are still substandard. Now you all tell me why.
I, I doubt anyone's gonna respond to you, ma'am. Your time is still...
Okay, well, we'll get one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I am unclear as to the order of this, so, Mr. Attorney, if you will help me here.
Right now, uh, what was adopted at the last meeting was, uh, an appropriation to appropriate a certain amount of money to do the sidewalk portion of the project, not, you know, the money wasn't there for the street portion of it. There was, uh, a written motion filed more than twenty-four hours before the meeting, which is required by section two dash fifty-six of the code to reconsider. That was filed by Councilman Coleman. There's been a second by Councilman Whitberry. So now the question before the, the council is, do you wish to reconsider the appropriation that was approved at the last meeting?
So a vote of yes would be to reconsider what was done.
Then there would have to be another vote as to whether to, to make that appropriation or not.
Okay.
But the first vote is whether to approve the, to actually reconsider it.
Okay. You've heard the explanation of the question. Any discussion or are we ready to vote?
Yeah, I want to just ask though, if, if we vote to reconsider, does that give them more time to speak? Is that a...
No.
No. In other words, you have spoken all that you can speak.
Yes.
Because I, I frankly am always in favor of anyone, any of our citizens, speaking their, about the issue that they are concerned about. And I think if she has time left, she ought to be allowed to finish it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. That reconsideration, I think the five hundred thousand dollars that was, uh, in the resolution for sidewalks, uh, we ask for reconstruction of Campbell Road. The design that Al was talking about, that Brickenhofer up here in Richmond did, uh, it had a background on there that stated sewers sidewalks, sewer system sidewalks, and what was the other one? Okay. And I am, my request is keep the five hundred thousand dollars there, up at eight million, and reconstruct the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we clear now on the vote and, and what we're doing?
Yes, and I want to just say, uh, that I know the disillusionment that I think that you have been experiencing, and I understand that. But I, I do trust our staff and our new city manager to make this the first step of the reconstruction of Campbell Road, and I think I have faith that they will do that. And as long as I'm here, I will remind them. Ms. Williams.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think it's important to move forward with the sidewalks. I know it's not a complete reconstruction of Campbell Road, but the sidewalks is a step in the right direction. And right now, uh, this, the eight million dollars is not in our capital improvement plan, not in the five-year plan. So I mean, I, I think we would be remiss if we didn't move forward with the sidewalks.
Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, sir, just real quick. I agree. I've had long discussions with Ms. Williams about this. I actually had a discussion, uh, with city staff on Friday about this issue and about trying to get it back on the capital improvement plan and hopefully find the funding to proceed with, uh, the repairs to, much-needed repairs to Campbell Road. I think the, uh, the sidewalk project is something we need to move forward with. I was assured that if we put the sidewalks in, it will not have an effect on any future repairs on the road, like they'll have to tear the sidewalks out to repair the rest of the road. So, um, I'm looking forward to continue working with staff and with city manager's office to obtain those funds for the, for the other repairs.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bateman?
Yes.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Against.
Councilwoman Scott?
Against.
Councilwoman Vick?
Against.
Councilman Whitaker?
Again.
Councilwoman Whitberry.
I'm confused.
The motion, the motion is to reconsider.
To reconsider. And if we vote no, that means we don't reconsider. We move forward with the...
With, with...
All right. I think we should move forward with the sidewalks, so I'm gonna vote no.
Motion failed, six one.
Thank you. Okay, we were doing a roll call for new business, um, and I think it was me next. I only have one item. For those of you who have never had an opportunity to talk to a saint, I would suggest that you, uh, talk to my wife. I, uh, and I say that after, yes, after thirty-nine years of marriage, and today is her, it's still today, which is her birthday. Yes, and I just want to congratulate her and hope that, uh, her brother gets well soon. Next, Councilwoman Scott.
Yeah, just have a couple things, and I'll be brief. Um, I just wanna thank all the citizens for coming down and speaking to the issues tonight. As everyone knows, I am for open government, so I, I was proud of all the comments, whether I agreed or not was not relevant, but the fact that they came down to speak their concern. Also, um, on August seventeenth, which is this coming Saturday, we have a back-to-school celebration at the New Denby Community Center. It's an indoor-outdoor event. It's in partnership with the Newport News Parks and Recreations, Living Waters, Christian Center, and Councilwoman Sharon Scott. And also, um, the Denby Deltas are donating the one thousand schools, packages of school supplies, as they have done for me in the past. Um, the event that usually equipped kids with school supplies was the Field of Friends, and it was not held this year. We were really disappointed. And also Officer Livingston will be there. He had a program he was gonna have on a subsequent Saturday, so he will be joining this effort for the back-to-school celebration. So we'll have school supplies, a full day of activities, bounce toys, clowns, face painting, food, free food, and it's free and open to the community. So please come out and support our first major event at the Newport, the New Denby Community Center. Also, um, on, uh, August twenty-sixth, uh, we will be hosting our North District Town Hall meeting, and, um, our brave new city manager, Jim Borey, has volunteered to come to be our guest speaker. So, uh, we really appreciate him making this effort, and, and I told him that we are a great group and we enjoy exchanges of information, so he will be fine. But anyways, please come to the meeting, um, August twenty-sixth at the Denby Community Center at seven P.M. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick.
I do have to say happy, uh, happy birthday to my very firstborn, my daughter, Tiana Shay. Vick, happy birthday. And also, I would love to announce, because I don't think we will have another meeting, September second, uh, we'll be at King Lincoln Park. I have partnered with Bliss Salon, and we will be doing, um, free haircuts and hairstyles for, hairstyles for the young ladies and free haircuts for the young men to help them boost their self-worth and self-esteem as they go back to school and get their education. So we'll be there at King Lincoln Park, and I believe at Shelter Three, um, from twelve to four. And you can always get into contact with the clerk's office too, uh, if you need more information or to contact me. And that's all I have.
Councilman Whitaker. Councilwoman Whitberry.
Yes, uh, I saw the lady who is in charge of... Yes, I saw the lady who is in charge of dance party, and she sat and waited quite a few hours into the evening without getting, because she had planned to speak. But that took place, the second one, I attended, and there are pictures of me doing line dancing, because I took the line dancing class, and it was, it was a lot of fun. Parks and Rec provide the refreshments, but it's a great thing. So I disagree with you, Ms., that there is, that's great things happening at that community center, and one of them is the dance party. And so on August twenty-ninth, there will be another one. First hour, six thirty to seven thirty is the line dancing, and then at seven to ten, seven thirty to ten, they do ballroom dancing and instruction. So it's, it is really a lovely thing for our seniors and for those who aren't seniors. She does not make people leave if they're not old enough. So, but I don't have to worry about that. I wanted to comment that there will be a Maxwell Gardens Crime Watch meeting, where our codes person will be there, and hopefully, our assistant city manager, and the city manager, if he is available, on August the twentieth, at the Yacht Club, Warwick Yacht Club, on Maxwell Lane. I wanted to announce, I serve on the governing board for the Virginia Municipal League, and last weekend, we spent just about as much time as we spent tonight, from Thursday until noon until Saturday afternoon, interviewing people, and we did decide on a new executive director, which will be announced within the next week. Also, I wanted to wish all the students who are returning to school a good school year, and hopefully, lots of learning will take place, and wish you well in your new school year. The only other thing I wanted to do was to comment on the Virginia Tech and the UVA offering a collaboration for, you know, graduate study, and I think that's a wonderful partnership and supported by the city, and I certainly support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As long as you don't try to do that dip, do that line dance.
Just a reminder, August twenty-seventh, council meeting has been canceled. We will see you Tuesday, September the tenth, at seven o'clock. If there's no further business, may what you say and do uplift the city of Newport News.